One more little song. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to beautiful Temecula Civic Center. We are live from downtown Temecula, and I want to welcome everybody here tonight. If you're not from Temecula, take the time to walk our halls, look at some of the artwork out in the courtyard. I think you'll find it pretty beautiful. And at this time, I'm going to call the meeting to order. I wanted to thank the Cadenza String Orchestra for our prelude music. Thank you very much. It is our tradition to start off our council meetings with an invocation. Tonight, that'll be given by our city manager, and I'm going to ask everybody to stand. After that, I'm going to ask you to remain standing where Skyler Temple, a prominent member of our community, will give the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Would you please bow your heads? Dear me, Father Lord, we just, we give you thanks for this day, this evening, this opportunity to convene. Lord, the city of Temecula is blessed with amazing residents and amazing businesses, and we come to you this evening to have your hand on this meeting. We pray for wisdom, we pray for discernment for the city council, the city staff. Lord, I also lift up all of our first responders, that you would have their, your hand on them for protection and safety as they protect our great city. And in these things, we glorify you in all things. In Jesus' name, amen.
Hey, good evening, everyone. Place your right hand over your heart, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless you. You can be seated. Madam City Clerk, I have some distinguished members to my left and to my right. Can you please call the roll?
Councilmember Edwards?
Here.
Councilmember Ron?
Here.
Councilmember Schwan?
Here.
Councilmember Stewart?
Here.
Mayor Niggar?
I am here.
Mr. Mayor, just a point of order, if I may. Item 23 on the agenda this evening, I know yourself and councilmember Ron are authors of that agenda item. Obviously, we have a lot of folks here this evening to hear that item, to speak to that item. I think it's important that we allow them to do so this evening, as well as hear from your colleagues. But it would be my professional recommendation that you not take a vote on that item this evening.
Sounds good. And Mr. City Manager, having discussed that with you prior to the meeting, I think this is the way I want to conduct it. And we're telling you ahead of time as a courtesy. It would have been my desire to roll this matter out a little bit more gradually and a little bit more evolutionary, if you will. That is, take more input, have a great discussion, have a great dialogue among citizens, get all kinds of points of view. That was the purpose. I think by tabling the vote and then beginning that discussion tonight is a good thing. And so that's the discussion that we're going to have tonight, and we'll get more into how that discussion will go later on. So, we're going to, and I think it's going to be a lively discussion and a very informative one. Okay, so let's go ahead and go to our presentations.
Mr. Mayor, sorry. One other point of clarification. For those that are standing in the back, there are seats available in the conference center across the foyer where the meeting is being simulcast, so you don't need to stand if you want to have a more comfortable seat across the hall as well.
Or in the foyer. Thank you. As is our tradition, we have many students here as part of their government class. Where are my golden bears tonight? Golden bears, are you here? All right. Pumas, are there any pumas in the house?
Yeah!
Looking good, looking good. Wolf pack! All right, okay, we got some wolf packs.
Oh, there's a couple, yeah.
And then, you know, believe it or not, every now and then, we're visited from a City of Marietta student. So are you guys here tonight? Any Marietta students?
On the back.
All right, welcome. You know, I think it's a requirement that you stay till eight o'clock. You're welcome to stay later, but when the time comes, if you want to leave at eight, we'll hand you a slip proving you were here. Also, you're going to get a copy of a pocket constitution. If you like it, you'll get that on the way out. Okay. Let's see. Now's the time for presentations and proclamations. Let's see. Is Magda Stewart here? Magda, come on up. I think you wanted to give us a little something tonight.
Yes, hi. I brought a handful of our volunteers with me, so I want them all to come up.
Please do.
So, my name is Magda Stewart, and I'm with the Trauma Intervention Program of Southwest Riverside County. And for the benefit of those in the audience that do not know who we are, we are a group of specially trained volunteers who are called out by first responders to scenes of traumatic events. And our job is to provide emotional and practical support the first few hours after that event. And a little bit of statistics for 2018. In 2018, we were able to assist over 2,300 clients. We were able to provide over 2,000 services, and our volunteers drove over 11,000 miles.
Wow.
The reason we're here today, though, is I'm not sure how many of you know the story of how TIP got started here in the Temecula Valley. But back in 1992, Temecula had a major incident with several loss of life. It made the media's big time. And at the time, the chief of police in Temecula called out to San Diego for some help. They needed some assistance. So San Diego said, you know, "We have these volunteers we can send you." And the chief of police at the time says, "I don't care what you send me, just send me help." So they sent a few of our TIP volunteers up here. And it was after that that the chief of police in Temecula asked for TIP program to start here. So the reason we're here tonight is because we want to say thank you to you, the city of Temecula, councilmembers, city manager, as well as our first responder partners, because without you guys, we wouldn't be here. And not only that, but you have been supporting us for over 20 years. So we wanted to say thank you. So we have a little plaque for you all, and it says, "TIP presents the city of Temecula, city councilmembers, city manager, and first responders with heartfelt appreciation for your unfailing support of the Trauma Innovation Programs of Southwest Riverside County for the last 20-plus years." So, we wanted to let you know how grateful we are for you, and we wanted to say to the police chief, thank you so much for being one of our partners, and also to Cal Fire, Riverside Fire, and all of the first responders, as well as the hospital. So, thank you so much, and...
So, you know what I'd like to do? I think it'd be appropriate if Mayor Protem Stewart and I came down. Chief, would you join us down for a photo as well? And is Fire Chief Jody here by any chance?
She's here.
There you are. Can you come on down too, chief? We got two chiefs, a mayor and a mayor protem.
Nice, thank you.
We have two female chiefs.
Two female chiefs?
Woo-hoo!
I thought it was three with CHP.
It's three if you count the CHP commander, who is also a female. Oh, yeah, yeah.
Thank you. Why don't we line up here in front of the dais here? I'll tell you what. I'll let you ladies hold that. Why don't we get one chief on that end?
Split the teams up.
You know, usually it's Marianne Edwards who does all this organizing right here.
I'm going to stand in front of that.
There you go. There you go.
That looks good.
You got it?
That looks good.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, while you're walking back, I'd just like to say what TIP actually does. They didn't really say what they did. They sort of alluded to it, but anytime there's an accident or someone, you know, has a problem, TIP is called. And during, you know, the immediate aftermath of an accident, they are on scene to comfort family members, to aid in first aid services that our first responders give, and they will stay with that family and those family members all the way to the hospital and beyond to make sure that mentally they are taken care of and physically they are taken care of along, you know, they get excellent care from our first responders and from our hospitals. But TIP is so critical in that. When you have an accident and you may be unconscious, you wake up and you wonder, "Where are your children that were in the car with you?" And that's what TIP does. They are, they're like our first responders, and they deal with the aftermath of accidents, family members, and all of those things. So, TIP, we still honor you, and there's a reason we've supported you all these years, because you do a wonderful job and it's very important. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Edwards. We have three other presentations. If Mr. Pat Thomas can join Mayor Protem Stewart down at the podium for Arbor Day.
I would be happy to, and I would also like to ask Stacy Fox, our park maintenance supervisor, to come down as well and accept this proclamation with me.
Sounds good.
Well, since it's a very wordy proclamation, I'll get started now while they're coming down. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for planting trees. And whereas this holiday is called Arbor Day, was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world, and whereas trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable resource, giving up paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas the trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Niggar, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim April 26, 2019, to be Arbor Day. In the city of Temecula, we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and support efforts to protect our trees, woodlands, and urban forests, and to plant trees to gladden the hearts and promote the well-being of this future generations.
So Stacy, we're going to put you on the spot. You too, Pat. How many trees are in Temecula?
Oh, my gosh.
I'm just messing with you. But tell us a little bit, maybe how many are we planting? I know we have a tree planting program. Give us a little insight.
Yeah, sure. This Saturday, it's April 27, at Temecula Duck Pond, we're holding the Arbor Day celebration. We'll be planting a few trees. We'll have some information about trees and our urban forests and how to care for them, and some activity for the kids that come out, so.
Are we, are we still running the street tree program, where if a resident wants a street tree, they can call up and have one planted?
Absolutely, we do.
Yeah. Talk a little bit about that, because I bet a lot of residents don't know that.
Sure, yeah. As we're an aging city, we do have trees that are declining and have lived their life, so we do have a tree replacement program for right-of-way trees that are within the front yards of residents.
At no cost.
At no cost to them.
And maintained by the city.
And maintained by the city.
That's a beautiful deal, folks. So you may want to look into it if you have a parkway in the right-of-way. Anything else, Stacy?
I also want to add too, we were recently, in 2018, recognized as a Tree City USA.
Right.
So with that, that's why we're here today, to celebrate Arbor Day and have this proclamation that was read tonight.
Well, you guys do a good job, and frankly, as you drive through Temecula and you see all the beautiful trees, it's you and your group that we need to thank, so thank you.
Yes, thanks. Trees really make our community.
They really do.
Yes.
Great myrtles are going to start to bloom pretty soon, too.
Yeah.
Yeah, thanks.
Great, thank you.
Okay, we're going to have a presentation and a proclamation for Municipal City Clerk's Week. And I would love to just embarrass our city clerk, Randy Joel, but she'll pay me back later if I do, so I will not.
Oh, come on.
But she's one of the best city clerks in the state of California.
I believe she was City Clerk of the Year for the state of California.
That's exactly right.
Okay, whereas in 1984 and 1994, Presidents Ronald Reagan and Bill Clinton respectively signed a proclamation officially declaring Municipal Clerk's Week the first week of May, and recognizing the essential role Municipal Clerks play. Try to say that fast three times. Municipal Clerks play in local government, and whereas the office of municipal clerk is a time-honored position with a vital part of local government existing throughout the world today. And whereas the municipal clerks provide a professional link between the citizens that they serve in their communities, local governing bodies, and governmental agencies at all levels. And whereas the responsibility of municipal clerks, too bad we couldn't abbreviate that somehow. Throughout the world, very greatly ranging from administering elections and voter registrations to human resources and tax collection, to historic preservationists and beyond. And whereas municipal clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of the neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal services to all in all that they do. And whereas municipal clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the office of municipal clerks through participation in educational programs and professional development through, throughout the state, provincial, county, and international organizations. Now, therefore, I, Michael S. Niggar, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through the 11th of Municipal Clerk's Week. And further, to extend appreciation to all in office of our municipal clerk for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to our community.
Ms. Joel, would you like to say anything?
I would just like to say it is an absolute privilege to serve the city council and work with this executive team and serve these residents. So thanking, thanking you for allowing me the opportunity to live, work, and play in Temecula.
Absolutely, thank you. All right, and our last proclamation. Is Rebecca Wirsing here? Rebecca?
There she is, right over there.
Where are you? Well, hey there, Ms. Rebecca. That's okay.
That happens a lot at City Hall.
It's a habit of mine as well.
All right. Whereas public gardens are community resources for the enjoyment of nature and volunteering, social connection, and education about planet, how would you say that?
Planetary.
Planetary, so it's like the planets.
Yes.
Only planetary, okay. Planetary sustainability and conservation. And whereas the American Public Garden Association has declared the week of May 13 to 19 to be National Public Gardens Week. And whereas there are 19 public gardens within 150 miles of Temecula. And whereas Rose Haven Heritage Garden is a private garden open to the public and is located in Temecula at 30592 Jedidiah Smith Road. And whereas there will be special, there will be special events on the day of the National Public Gardens Week at Rose Haven Heritage Garden. Now therefore, I, Michael S. Niggar, on behalf of the city council of the city of Temecula, hereby proclaim the week of May 13 through 19, Rose Haven Heritage Garden Week. And encourages the community to visit, volunteer, and support Rose Haven Gardens, Heritage Garden during National Public Gardens Week and throughout the year. There you go.
Thank you, Rebecca. Would you like to say a few things?
Just a few things. During National Public Gardens Week, we encourage our community to visit, value, and volunteer at Rose Haven. On each of the seven days of National Public Gardens Week, we will offer a variety of activities. Those daily activities will be listed on our website and Facebook pages. We hope that our city will join other cities across the nation and go green by lighting up City Hall from May 13 to the 19. Our mission at Rose Haven is to provide a peaceful setting for quiet enjoyment, active learning, and building community connections through nature. Paraphrasing the playwright Richard Sheridan, "Please come into our garden. Our roses would like to see you." Thank you. She's so cute.
Thank you, Rebecca. Okay, we come to the public comment portion of our meeting. Madam City Clerk, do we have public comments?
Mr. Mayor, we do have public comments, and you're going to hear a wonderful message from the youth and government students from last week.
Awesome, okay. So, and do we have any speakers on the consent calendar?
We do have a couple of speakers on item number 17, and as such, we can go ahead and consider that separately, as councilmember Stewart will have a conflict based on the location of his property, and we'll be leaving the room for that item.
Okay, so let's take the public comments first, and then we'll go to 17. You don't have to leave just now. And do we have a video?
We do.
Let's do it.
A total of 30 minutes is provided for the members of the public to address the city council on items that appear within the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda. Each speaker is limited to three minutes. If the speaker chooses to address the city council on an item listed on the consent calendar or a matter not listed on the agenda, a request to speak form may be filled out and filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing the public comments and the consent calendar. Once the speaker is called to speak, please come forward for all public hearing or council business items on the agenda. A request to speak form may be filed with the city clerk prior to the city council addressing that item. On those items, each speaker is limited to five minutes.
That was great. The city has a youth and government program, which was just conducted over the past two days last week, and I'm sure some of my council members are going to report out on that at city council reports. I think you'll find that fantastic. Okay, Madam City Clerk, can you call the first speaker, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the only speaker on non-agendized items is Mark Caton.
Oh, he's over there.
Mr. Caton.
Oh, the Community Services Commissioners.
I suspect you're going to tell us about Taste of Temecula Valley?
It's possible.
Okay. And I brought up two volunteers from the fund department.
The fund department, yes.
Thanks to Zach, it's now called just the Fund Department, so we'll, we'll go with it. Yes, I'm here to talk about Taste of Temecula Valley, and two weeks ago, I brought too small of a form to get up on the video. So, I thought I'd bring a bigger one, maybe.
That one's even smaller.
Yeah, it feels a little small. So, we brought one, and the Fund Department's actually going to display that for us.
Very nice.
So, and why these two? Well, the Fund Department, both of these gentlemen are from the Temecula Valley Unified School District before they joined the Fund Department, and so it's rather fitting that they get to present that, too. Hopefully, you've seen these signs all over town. We have 50 of them throughout town, so you really can't drive around without seeing it. But hopefully, you notice the dates. It's this weekend. And if you've made plans already, change them, because this event is really fun. So, Friday night, we've got the VIP night, which is VIP dinner. We have bands, and then on Saturday, we have entertainment all day long, and great food, great food, alcohol, spirits, and a couple beer vendors. But a lot of fun, and we're looking forward to having as many people as possible. As I mentioned two weeks ago, we've delivered $185,000 back to the schools. You know, some people say, "Well, man, you should give a lot more," and so I need your help. Well, if all of you show up, then we'll have a lot more. So it's not just for the people here, but I couldn't miss out on this big crowd. So, thank you, Randy, for changing the agenda. And I really appreciate all of your support from the city, because we can't do it without such a great group of people in the Fund Department and all the other departments that help us. So, I really appreciate it. Thank you. I'll see you Friday or Saturday, whatever day. Sounds good. Stay there for a second, Mark. The Fund Department, everybody keeps referring to, is the Community Services Commission, and the Community Services Department, of which my colleague Mayor Protem Stewart is also president of that. And we have a couple of commissioners down there who just do a wonderful job. Ladies and gentlemen, if you haven't been to Taste of Temecula Valley, you need to go. This is just one of the premier events that we hold here in town, and thanks to you, Mark, you've been spearing it up now for how many years? This is our ninth year, and anybody that can make it to Friday night, Friday night is our VIP experience. And 14 chefs come out from Pachanga. This is the only event that Pachanga comes off property for, and those chefs make an amazing dinner for all of the VIP guests, so still have tickets available. And I remember, what, a couple of years ago, they were serving king crab legs, in fact. They were stacking the king crab legs like Lincoln Logs on their plate. like Lincoln Logs on their plates. It's amazing, okay? And they still went back for more. So the value is there, and the music. It's a wonderful event for a good cost. So I hope everybody shows up this Friday, Saturday, right? Exactly. Okay, you got it. Thank you so much. You're very welcome. Madam City Clerk, that was our only public speaker?
Correct on non-agendized items.
Okay, sounds good. Then I am going to go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we please have City Council reports first?
You know, thank you for keeping me on track. I was anxious to get into the agenda. Yes, we can have City Council reports. And who wants to get in the queue first? Mary Ann?
I pushed my button, but I'm still getting used to the new system. So you've already seen, you've had a glimpse of the talent that was a president in City Hall on Wednesday and Thursday. And they were seniors from our three high schools, Grado, Chaparral, and Temecula Valley High School. And we conducted our annual youth and government program. And that program, in a nutshell, is... I think we had 23 students, 21?
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one students. They come to City Hall early in the morning. They conduct a City Council election for those students that think that they want to serve on the City Council for those two days. We had our election. We placed five City Council members and the mayor, and you saw them sitting, giving the announcement for public comments. And while those five are learning, following, and Stu and I, and Zach and I, had the opportunity to talk to them everything City Council does and gave them the Brown Act and Robert's Rules of Order and showed them how to work the system. So while we were doing that, all the other students had taken shadowing opportunities with all of our department heads and our secondary department heads. And so they spent the morning learning every single department that they were assigned to. And they prepared a staff report for the City Council meeting, the mock council meeting, that was to take place the next day. So we arrived the next morning. We had our agendas in front of us. The City Council members came up and took their places. We gave them a quick lesson in how everything worked. And we went over the rules again and encouraged them to be bold. And we went over the agenda with them and showed them how to consider the items. And then the department heads came in, and we called the City Council meeting to order. And it was, it's always amazing every year, and I say this every year, but those kids could have taken our place. They had done their homework. They knew what they were talking about. Every student that had shadowed a department head came up and gave that department's report. They were professional, and they were asked some very difficult questions, were they not? Raise your hands, all youth in government. Yeah, thank you. And they were asked some very difficult questions. And on their feet, on the fly, they answered those questions. So department heads, directors, and others, you did a great job working with those students upstairs and preparing the staff reports. And they had an entire council meeting. They reviewed an item, and I can't talk about it because it's probably an item that we might review someday. So I'm just going to say they did a fantastic job. Then we break for lunch, and we do a debriefing with them. And we ask them what they learned, what the value is that they learned. And, you know, would they do it again? Would they recommend it? What did they think before, and would they think after? And we have a couple, Mr. Mayor. Could we take some license and maybe have them come down? Come down, and you're used to this because you did it last week. You might notice there's a slight resemblance between these two. But we hear wonderful comments. And the thing is that students and people don't realize there are many, many jobs within City Hall. You can be an engineer, an attorney, an administrator, a business professional, a finance professional. So introduce yourselves and give us a little, you know, one, two-minute summary.
I'm Hannah Salas.
And I'm Lauren Salas.
And this past week, I was able to shadow this Madam City Clerk.
Look at us. You have to look at us.
Sorry. I was able to shadow Madam City Clerk, and it was an amazing experience. And I learned a lot about city government and just a lot about her in general and all of you guys. And it was super fun. And I highly recommend it to any incoming senior to take AP Gov, because I'm pretty sure this is only offered to AP Gov students. And then hopefully, fingers crossed, pray that you get picked for this program, because it was so fun and I learned so much. And now I know all of you guys, and I can come here and speak to you guys without having to shake in fear that I'm talking to the City Council. But I really, really did appreciate it. And I know we all said thank you like a million times. But thank you again to each and every one of you who allowed us to come here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk, for being awesome. That's just all I have to say.
So, okay.
I'm Lauren again, and I was a City Councilwoman. And I got to work with Zach, Stu, and Mary Ann. And it was really awesome. I got to see the ins and outs of government, and it was really amazing. But one thing that I really did appreciate was that we got to see the relationships that everyone in the government had with one another and all the love that they had for their job. And it was super admirable and really amazing. And this will be an unforgettable experience. I had such a great time. I'm really interested in government, and this was amazing to everyone who was there. Thank you so much again. I know Hannah and I and everyone else that participated. You guys are amazing, and it was awesome.
And would you consider a job working in for a municipality?
Oh, yeah, yeah, for sure.
Would you have done that before?
Probably not.
No, I wasn't educated on it.
Now, for sure, yeah, probably.
Well, come back and work in Temecula because everybody is fun, and we do really function as a family. We loved it, did we not? We love it every year. So stay in touch, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, again.
That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Stewart?
Well, I'm just going to echo... Am I on?
Yeah.
I'm just going to echo what Mary Ann was saying. These kids were amazing. And it's probably my two favorite days on City Council is actually interfacing with these kids and kind of showing them what government really is. And the decisions we have to make aren't easy, and they found that out. And I won't say what they were discussing, but they came to the same conclusion we did. So, you know, it just goes to show you how their mindsets are really very parallel to ours. So that's it for me. I know Zach's got a...
Yeah, I guess we'll do the youth and government trifecta tonight. I've got a quick slide I'll throw up. I just want to say, you know, we've got youth and government alumni in the audience still active in local politics, which is kind of nice. The thing that I love most about the program is just how the collaboration between the school district and the city, we've got school board member Skumavitz there in the back. So it's nice to work across municipalities and with other agencies. So that was just a great thing for our city, really. And then just how staff just opened their doors. I mean, we spent maybe 10 minutes in Director Hawkins' office, and it was just a Q and A. And you're not going to get that anywhere else. So that was just an amazing opportunity for these kids. So just a great program. I love seeing it happen. And yeah, it's a very fun two days.
Can't wait till next year.
Councilmember Ron?
Oh, just a quick one. So last Friday, we had hosted here at City Hall, let me get my notes here, the inter-agency working group meeting on wildlife movement and habitat corridors. You know, it has to do with the Santa Ana-Palomar Mountains linkage, the constraint between, you know, the two mountain ranges across the I-15. And, you know, we've had these conversations quite a bit over the years with the council, but this discussion has been ongoing for nearly two decades, believe it or not. And still, we're looking for a solution to deal with those issues. And so interestingly, they brought, you know, three-county conversation to the City of Temecula. And for the first time, brought forward some plans and some real tangible solutions to dealing with the situation. They had Cal Poly Pomona students, the Civil Engineering Department, basically run through an exercise on engineering solutions to either over crossings, under crossings, or modifications to Temecula Creek itself. And, you know, for the first time, we saw some real solutions. So I'm hoping that the conversation continues and that they continue our discussion with the City of Temecula and Caltrans and all the other partners on this. And hopefully, soon, we'll start to see some movement forward on some success there. So it was nice to be able to host that here. That was it.
Thank you. And I just have a couple of items. Mr. City Manager, you recently showed us some minutes from our first City Council meeting back... Actually, it was prior to the first City Council meeting back in 1989, was it? Was it December 1989?
It was November of 1989. So it was before the city incorporated, but it was the elected city, first elected City Council preparing in a workshop setting for their first council meeting governing a brand-new city.
And I think many of you know we're celebrating our 30th anniversary as a city, and makes you wonder where the time went. Those documents are very valuable. And I don't know if Alice Sullivan is here. I think I see you through the crowds there. You found them, I hear, in some closet in a box over at the Chamber of Commerce. Again, this was, they were elected, but not yet seated because the city incorporation date was, what, December 10th, I believe?
December 1, 1989.
1989. I think there needs to be, if you, at the council's pleasure, bring an agenda item back to the council. I think those need to be displayed somewhere as part of the historic nature of the city. Perhaps, we can have this discussion, but perhaps where the portraits of our first City Council are. And if you read them, it's a marvelous insight into how the city was formed, the decisions that they handled at the time. And then you can compare it to today, how it's evolved. It's quite fantastic. Yeah, Councilmember Edwards is asking for a scan copy of those as well to the City Council.
Absolutely. We can email an electronic version out. And I know the clerk has the originals locked up in the vault because these were minutes. And we appreciate the chamber providing these documents because we did not have them in our possession. And they do tell a story that is fascinating.
Is the vault guarded?
By the City Clerk.
Okay, got it. All right. So you don't leave your garden of vault 24/7? Okay, got it. One other thing that I'd like to bring forward for consideration is former Councilmember Comacherro. Councilmember Comacherro served the city with distinction for about 22 years. He has played such an integral part in so many aspects of this community, you couldn't begin to pick them out. And it's fitting, not only for posterity for the city, to recognize former council members who have played such an integral part in how the city has formed and evolved. A lot of people associate Councilmember Comacherro with the Children's Museum. But primarily, that was the brainchild of his wife and the nonprofit that they formed. And so as we search around for some sort of fitting way to honor Councilmember Comacherro, the idea came to me, and City Manager, as you see fit, bring it back to the council or run it through as you, again, you see fit, because I believe we have a procedure for that, to name these chambers Comacherro Hall. And the thinking behind that, again, most people won't know, is that both Councilmember Jeff Comacherro and Councilmember Ron Roberts sat on the committee, which actually designed this entire civic center. And that took years and years of effort. Not only that, Councilmember Comacherro sat as mayor for the first City Council meeting in these chambers. So I'd like to float that for consideration in your timing, Mr. City Manager. And again, with all respect to my council colleagues, bring it here so that my council colleagues can weigh in as well. And then lastly, just a little bit heads up. On May 30th, I'll be giving my fifth State of the City address. It'll be at Pachanga. Everybody here is welcome, and we hope to see you there. And that's all I have for comments. So is it okay now if I go to the consent calendar? Thank you very much. All right, we're going to go to the consent calendar. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one roll-call vote. There will be no discussion of these items unless members of the City Council request specific items to be removed from the consent calendar for separate action. And I always like to say for you young people, these are a lot of routine things that if we took all night to look at them individually, we'd be here a long, long time. Item number one, waive reading of standard ordinances and resolutions. Two, approve the action minutes of April 9th, 2019. Three, approve the list of demands. That is the checks that the city writes. Four, approve City Treasurer's report as of February 28th, 2019. Five, adopt an ordinance 19-02, amending portions of the Temecula Municipal Code to add definitions and make minor clarifications and typographical corrections. This is the second reading. Six, approve the sponsorship agreement with Veterans of Foreign Wars, Temecula Valley VFW, Post 4089, for the 2019 Memorial Day Observance at the request of the Military Ad hoc Subcommittee of Councilmember Ron and Councilmember Schwenk. Seven, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement with Spurlock Landscape Architects for the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan Sidewalk Improvement Guidelines. Eight, approve a license agreement with Los Angeles SMSA Limited Partnership, doing business as Horizon Wireless for wireless installations on public structures. Nine, approve the Minor Construction Services Agreement with Moore Fence Company, Inc., for Old Town Temecula Community Theater Fence Installation. Ten, approve the Minor Construction Services Agreement with Morningstar Productions, LLC, for Community Recreation Center Amphitheater Lighting Installation. Eleven, approve a five-year minor maintenance agreement with Pacific Striping, Inc., for a citywide repainting of traffic striping services for the fiscal years 2020 to 2024. Twelve, approve a five-year minor maintenance agreement with True Line Construction and Surfacing, Inc., for sports, court, crack repair, resurfacing, and striping for fiscal years 2024. Thirteen, approve the amendment to the Minor Maintenance Agreement with Computer Alert Systems, Inc., for fire and security alarm monitoring services for fiscal year 2018-2019. Fourteen, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement for consultant services with Falcon Engineering Services, Inc., for Interstate 15, State Route 79 South, Ultimate Interchange, Public Works Project 04-08. Fifteen, approve the Second Amendment to the agreement for consultant services with TY Lin International for the French Valley Parkway I-15 Improvements, Phase 2, Public Works Project 16-01. Sixteen, approve Parcel Map 37021, located at the northeast corner of Pachanga Parkway and Loma Linda Road. Seventeen, we're going to poll, and we'll get to that in a minute.[1629.62] Seventeen, we're going to poll, and we'll get to that in a minute, and that's it. So, with the exception of item seventeen...
Move the balance.
Thank you.
One second.
We have a motion and a second. Please cast your votes. There we go. And that passes five-zero. Since item seventeen was polled and we have speakers, Mayor Protem Stewart is going to recuse himself, step off the dais, and leave the room, because he has property ownership in the Meadowview area in which this item is involved in. So as soon as that door closes, there we go. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Jerry Gonzalez, our Associate Traffic Engineer, to come forward and provide the brief staff presentation.
Jerry, good evening to you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and councilmembers. A request was received from residents to review the feasibility of implementing traffic calming measures on Villa Norte and Del Ray Road to reduce excessive vehicle speeds on those two roadways in the Meadowview area. That request included a review of all-way stop controls at locations where right-of-way assignment may be deemed necessary. Also, there was, part of that was to look at intersections that may be in need of mitigation for visibility constraints or locations where entry volumes are split equally. The request for the stop signs along with the traffic calming measures was presented to the commission at their March meeting two thousand and nineteen. The five intersections that are shown before you in the stars were considered potential stop sign candidates, requiring further evaluation, but after a review of conditions and visibility, two intersections were excluded, and the intersections that were analyzed are Villa Norte at Carmelita Circle West, Villa Norte at Avenida Centenario, and Del Ray at Buenos Suerte. Also, just for informational purposes, circles in that slide indicate the intersections that are currently all-way stop controls, and those were, some of them may not have met the warrants at the time that they were implemented, but the justification for those stop signs was based on visibility constraints and also intersections that are serving as collector roadways into the Meadowview area. So, a lot had to do with traffic operational purposes. So an all-way stop warrant analysis I mentioned was performed that included the review of minimum vehicle volumes, collision history, roadway characteristics, and visibility using the city's stop sign policy for residential streets, which we often use to perform an analysis on collector roadways such as Del Ray and Villa Norte. The results of that analysis indicate that stop signs are warranted at three locations in the area. The commission considered the recommendation for the all-way stop controls along with the traffic calming, as I mentioned earlier, and after receiving comments from the Meadowview residents that were in attendance at the meeting, the commission recommended the installation of all-way stops at Avenida Buenos Suerte only, and recommended that staff reevaluate conditions at the other two locations after installation of the traffic calming measures. The traffic calming measures include edge line striping and also striped parking lanes along Del Ray and Villa Norte. So briefly, the sight distance analysis that we performed at the three intersections revealed that visibility is limited for conditions and prevailing speeds. At the Carmelita Circle West intersection, which is before you, the analysis indicates that the visibility looking east is approximately one hundred and sixty feet, and then looking west, it's about one hundred and ninety feet. A minimum of unobstructed sight distance of two hundred and fifty feet is required for the thirty-five mile per hour posted speed limit. However, in this location, the prevailing speed or the eighty-fifth percentile speed along Villa Norte is approximately forty miles per hour. So, we took a conservative approach and evaluated sight distance based on that speed limit, which is actually three hundred feet. So as you can see by what I just mentioned, you know, the visibility is really obstructed at this intersection, and that led us to the recommendation for a multi-way stop at this location. At Avenida Centenario, our analysis indicates that the visibility looking east is approximately one hundred and thirty-five feet and four hundred and fifty feet looking west, and on that slide, you can see that looking west, you've got unlimited visibility. Looking east, obviously, you have, it's very limited, the fence is providing a visibility obstruction. There's also a hill up there that, as you're coming down the hill, you can't really see over that. So there are some issues there. That's another reason that led us to the recommendation for a multi-way stop at this location, along with the fact that Avenida Centenario does serve as kind of a through street providing access between Villa Norte and Del Ray Road. At Avenida Buenos Suerte, the visibility looking east is approximately one hundred and ninety feet, and the visibility looking to the west is about four hundred and eighty feet. Again, the unobstructed view is two hundred and fifty feet for the thirty-five mile per hour speed limit. At this location, the challenge is, as you're looking east, is that there is a hill up there, and the crest of the hill, the visibility is very limited for vehicles coming down the crest of that hill, along with that vegetation that's there. Again, this intersection, very much like Avenida Centenario, which it is the extension of Avenida Centenario, is a through road, functions that, you know, is a through street through the community there, provides access between Del Ray and Villa Norte. Another reason that led us to the recommendation for the stop sign as well as the visibility constraints at that intersection. So in conclusion, short report, the limited sight distance at the three intersections and the roadway characteristics that are identified for Avenida Buenos Suerte and Avenida Centenario led us to conclude that all-way stop controls were justified at the three intersections, and we're recommending a stop sign. And that concludes our presentation. If there's any questions, we'd be happy to answer.
Jerry, thank you for a thorough staff report. Are there any questions of Jerry right now?
None.
Okay, seeing none, we'll go to our first speaker, Madam City Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have seven speakers on this item. The first speaker is Paula Peterson, to be followed by Tim Kramer.
Ms. Peterson, welcome. I just want to remember all the speakers, you have three minutes. And so, you have three minutes, and when you get close, I'll politely...
Okay, I don't have three minutes.
No, you do.
No, I don't.
No, you're going to take three minutes.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, and staff. My name is Paula Peterson, and I'm a longtime resident of Meadowview. I'm a former board member, and currently, and from the whole time we've been going, I am on the Meadow Management Committee that we are always trying to improve and save our meadow. Like many residents, I share concerns about the safety of the roads located in the community, and I support the proposed speed limits and additional stop signs. However, I'm here to raise another issue concerning the roads. Meadowview is an older community, it's, this year will be fifty years old, and it was built before Temecula was a city, and it has no storm drains. All of the road water runoff pours into our meadow, mostly in concentrated flows that carve deep and sometimes dangerous gullies. These gullies are a safety hazard for walkers, riders, people using the meadow, and homeowners, because we've had sinkholes this year from the Valentine's Day rain, five inches poured into our meadow and into people's yards. Meadowview takes this issue seriously, as evidenced by our community's completion earlier this year of an expensive, multi-agency stream restoration partnership project, which addressed some of the high-risk areas. Many city officials, including Pat Thomas, Nino, are bad, and many other officials are aware of this issue. We are requesting that, I had to re-change my notes here, we are requesting that we take advantage of the opportunity afforded by repaving Meadowview's roads to make changes that will minimize the runoffs. I'm here to ask the council to encourage and support these efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Tim Kramer, to be followed by Kathleen Binstock.
Mr. Kramer, welcome, sir.
Good evening, and thank you all for your time. My name is Tim Kramer, and I've been a Temecula area resident for over twenty years. I'm the wine maker at Lena Sellers, and my partners and I, we own several businesses and restaurants here in Temecula. My wife is also a local photographer. So my point is, my family and I are firmly entrenched in the community, and we love Temecula, we love it here. Not long ago, my wife and I purchased what she refers to as her dream home in the beautiful and peaceful community of Meadowview. We've been looking for months and months, and when this house came on the market, we knew we found the one. We love the quiet, countrylike atmosphere within Meadowview, and the location is unbeatable. Fast forward to a few weeks ago, when I was out in the front yard playing baseball with my son, and some friendly neighbors stopped by to introduce themselves. They also informed me that there was a proposal to establish a three-way stop control at the intersection immediately in front of our property, the intersection of Del Ray Road and Avenida Buenos Suerte. And when I say immediately in front of, I mean that if a stop sign gets installed going east on Del Ray, every single car that goes through the intersection would stop right in front of my driveway, not partially in front of or kind of in the vicinity of, but fully in front of and blocking the driveway. Two cars at the same time would block my neighbor's driveway as well. Additionally, the added noise of every car stopping and starting up again would dilute the privacy, peace, and quiet we found when we bought the home to begin with. I'm in total favor of safety within our neighborhoods. My son often has to chase the ball down the street, and cars whizzing by at unsafe speeds can obviously be dangerous. However, I would ask you all to please look at an alternative resolution for this intersection other than the proposed three-way stop. The other two proposed all-way stops on Villa Norte were recently repealed and are to be reevaluated after implementation of the roadway striping and traffic calming features that are upcoming. Can we not do the same for the intersection of Del Ray and Avenida Buenos Suerte? A couple other possible resolutions that I'm sure have been discussed, but are, the fact that vehicles traveling eastbound, which is my side of the street, are going up a gradual grade, which inherently keeps speed down to a degree. The issue with speeders in that particular area more so lies in the westbound traffic, which are the vehicles going down the grade that tend to pick up gradual speed. I'm not opposed to a stop sign for the westbound traffic only, in addition to the stop sign already located on Avenida Buenos Suerte, as it doesn't block anyone's driveway, but I don't see the need for a stop sign heading eastbound. Speed limit reduction throughout Meadowview, why not lower the overall speed throughout the main loop consisting of Del Ray and Villa Norte to twenty-five or even thirty miles an hour? That's a safe speed for residential neighborhoods and would solve a lot of the speed problems as long as drivers obey the speed limit, which leads to enforcement. And just like everybody else, I'm not wanting traffic officers always lurking around, no disrespect, but we need some type of speed enforcement if this is an ongoing problem, will force the drivers to be mindful of their speed and thereby increase the safety within our community. And finally, in my plea to ask you to reconsider approving this approved stop, this proposed stop control at this time, I would ask you to think how you'd feel if every car going through your neighborhood stopped right in front of your driveway. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Kramer. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kathleen Binstock, to be followed by Josie Madrid.
Ms. Binstock, good evening to you.
Hi. Hello, sir. Nice to meet you all. Thank you for having me here today. I have been a Meadowview resident for six years now. I live on Del Ray Road, just west of Pina Colada and San Pasquale. I live kind of on a curve. We recently, I don't know if any of you drive through the area, but we recently upgraded our property and had, for eight months, it was just torn up and a mess, so that's my house. It's been a joy to live in Temecula, by the way, and dealing with the Public Works Department, and everybody within the city has been literally high above what I've ever experienced through San Diego, being a larger city, so I love it here. I want, I'm very concerned, I'm glad that this gentleman mentioned raising, or lowering the speed limit. When the Public Works Department came to our homeowners' association meeting a few months ago, they shared their analysis. On the analysis, I thought that I caught an error, but I wanted to be sure, so I didn't speak up right away. When I went home, I looked at our speed limit sign. They quoted our speed limit on Del Ray as thirty-five miles an hour, and they said that eighty-five percent of the cars that drive through there daily are driving thirty-seven miles an hour. I went home, on the way home, and I thought, it's not thirty-five miles an hour, it's thirty miles an hour. Our posted speed limit on Del Ray Road between Pina Colada and all the way down to Del Norte is thirty miles an hour, but cars are traveling thirty-seven and on upwards. I'm also a first responder. Very, very, I have to go to traffic collisions all the time, I have to go respond to terrible things that happen. So when I'm walking, as you know, we don't have sidewalks in Meadowview, when I'm walking daily, my dogs, to get down to the meadow and exercise them, I am yelling, as well as other neighbors, at cars, "Slow down, slow down." It's an ongoing problem. Friday and Saturday nights are terrible. I sit in my living room, and I just hear them whipping by. Morning, early morning hours also, people are just, they're just not adhering to the rules and regulations of the speed limit. I am for further patrolling. I am for having more officers in our area and, you know, just making, helping to, for people to have accountability and have to pay the fines and so forth. So I would like to respectfully request that we would lower the speed limit to twenty-five. I think that might be a help. Also, I know the residents of Avenida Barca, that's just a small strip that leads down to Margarita, it's not real safe driving thirty through there. I drive a big SUV. When I drive thirty through there, if I hit somebody, that's a loaded weapon I'm driving. So, I would think that maybe you would possibly include the lowering the speed limit on Avenida Barca as well, just for the safety of everybody.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Josie Madrid, to be followed by Victoria Klein.
Mr. Madrid, come on down. There you go. Josie, good evening, ma'am.
Good evening, council. I am also a proud resident of Temecula. I've been here since nineteen eighty-four, and we built our house in Meadowview. I kind of messed up here, I missed some meetings at our Meadowview Association and didn't realize that we needed to come here to that last council meeting and speak up. I thought that Villa Norte, Carmelita South, stop sign was a done deal, and I live right there, I live right next door to Stu. The cars would be stopping in front of my house, and I don't have a problem with that. I really would like for you guys to reconsider that stop sign. Those cars come down that street unbelievably fast. For me, to have them stop in front of my house is, to me, is not going to be an inconvenience if it's going to save somebody. The first picture that was, that he posted on his computer, my, you could see the roof of my house, and when you're coming up Carmelita Circle, that is such a blind spot looking down Villa Norte. And I just don't know what the deal is with people. We've had a person, we have personal eyes in place, we've had somebody stop us and say, "You were driving too slow on Villa Norte," to my husband, and he's going, "You were driving too fast, I was slowing you down." So I really would like to see if we can reconsider that one and what we need to do to, you know, look at it again. You know, I can't speak for the other ones, but that one, especially when, I had a hard time hearing the guy, but that one is just horrible. So since my house is right there, and it would just affect my house and Stu's house, I think that, I know he doesn't have a vote, but I know, I have an inside that it wouldn't bother him to have a stop sign there, so maybe we can revisit that or what we need to do. Okay? Thank you so much. Okay. If I did something illegal, I'm sorry.
No, no, you're good, you're good.
All right, thank you.
Is Stu a good neighbor?
He's a wonderful neighbor.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Victoria Klein, to be followed by Jay Finnell.
Ms. Klein, good evening to you.
Good evening to you too, and council. I just want you to know that we've lived in Temecula, in the Meadowview area, since nineteen seventy-nine for forty years. And just to let everyone know around here, the speed limit in Meadowview was fifty-five miles an hour at that time. There was no speed limit at all. There was no lines on Del Ray, there was no lines on Villa Norte. Then they finally slowed the speed limit down. I live on Avenida Buenos Suerte now, this is my third lot, and our concern is the westbound coming down Del Ray, not going up Del Ray, to where Tim, our new neighbor that just moved in, I reiterate to him about this meeting tonight, because they will be stopping right in front of his house and right next door to his house. And it is hard coming up that hill, we're already slowing down, and people coming down that hill are flying down. I object to putting a stop sign going up. I don't, I'm not, I don't mind having the stop sign coming down the hill to stop the traffic. That was my main concern. And also the one on Villa Norte and Carmelita Circle, coming down westbound on Villa Norte and Carmelita Circle, they're flying down there, and it's kind of hard to pull out, coming on and turning left to go down to the mall. And I feel like a lot of the speeders that we have are coming in from Avenida Barca or Pina Colada and going down the ray and going to the mall. So, that's all I have to say.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
You're welcome. Thank you.
You're welcome. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Jay Finnell, to be followed by our final speaker, Michael Buer.
Mr. Finnell.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and councilmembers. I'm in favor of the adoption of Resolution Number Nineteen for the all-way stop at Buenos Suerte and Del Ray. Traffic calming measures are badly needed in Meadowview. I've lived there for thirty-four years, since nineteen eighty-five. The last two ladies beat me by a few years, and I've noticed in the last year, speed limits increasing a lot. I live on Villa Norte. I live near Caia Fiesta and in between there and Del Raposo, and Fiesta's at the top of the hill, Del Raposo's at the top of a hill, people drive down those hills, they're, without using their brakes, they can get up to forty, forty-five miles an hour. You have to ride your brakes going down these hills. Otherwise, you're going to be breaking the speed limit at thirty-five. The speed limit should be dropped to at least thirty or even twenty-five. People have to back out of their driveways. I don't. I don't, because it's really, really dangerous. I'm lucky I have a big enough driveway I can pull out forward. I walk my dog along those streets almost every day. People are speeding a lot. I walk for exercise, people don't walk, just walk their dogs, they walk for exercise, they ride their bicycles. Heaven help you when you go to check your mailbox. Or if... Or if you're doing any work on the street curb to help make the neighborhood look better by pulling weeds in your yard. There's a school zone in there over by Del Raposo. It's a drop-off and pickup zone, and it's 25. But like I said, and like you've heard, people are not, they're not following the speed limit there, and they need to. This Via Norte-Del Rey loop needs to be controlled. And I'm in favor of this Resolution Number 19. Please adopt it, and thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. And our last speaker?
Our last speaker is Michael Brewer.
Mr. Brewer, good evening to you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and fellow council members. I'm a longtime Meadowview resident as well. I've been there since 1999. I was at the original traffic commission meeting, and I spoke very adamantly against the two stop signs on Via Norte. And it's very evident that all the testimony you're hearing is everybody wants to talk about speed. And we know that stop signs are not supposed to be used as speed control devices. That's not their intent, and that's not, even the law is very clear on that point. In addition, the staff report even mentions that the three mandatory warrants for a stop sign, the, the traffic flow going through an intersection, the vehicle volume, the pedestrian volume, the, also the collision history, and the road characteristics, none of it are supported for any of these stop signs, any of the three. I only spoke against the two that were, most impacted me, because I drive all the way back into Meadowview, and I would have to stop multiple times every day, coming to and from my house at an intersection that's been there for 50 years and doesn't have a traffic history, collision history. So I don't see that these stop signs are warranted. I think it's the wrong approach to control speed in Meadowview. I agreed with the other calming measures that they were suggesting, and I just find that they're not following the law and the justification for these, and the staff report is very evident on it. And I think they were trying to stretch it by saying that the visibility is a problem, because if visibility was a problem, there would have been a collision history to go with that. And not only that, as I transg, go through these intersections, both, you know, different ways, because of different ways of going out of the community, and I've never had a real problem getting in and out of any of these things where I felt I was unsafe on these particular intersections. So I ask that you either adopt the resolution as amended, or even amend it further to remove the other stop sign. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. That's all the speakers that we have, correct? All right, so we move over to council discussion. Ms. Marian.
I, I have a question for Jerry. We had several requests from residents to lower the speed limit, and cities are not allowed to lower speed limits just arbitrarily. There are state rules and guidelines that we have to follow, and, and the way that that's done is a speed survey is taken on that street, and it has to be a minimum of 100 cars, and they measure the speeds of those cars. Then they throw out the top 15% of speeds. So you're going to throw out the guy that's going 60 and the guy that's going 50. And that's called the 85th percentile rule. So what speed, whatever speed that 85% of the 100 cars were traveling, that is the speed that establishes the speed limit on that street. So the speed limits are really determined and established by the drivers on the street, and cities cannot change that or arbitrarily lower it. By arbitrarily lowering it without a speed study, makes it a, a speed trap. Because what about, all cities could just lower their speed limits to five miles an hour and think of the revenue they generate from all the traffic tickets. So that's why the state sets the 85th percentile as the rule for setting speed limits on streets. So I don't know what the speed limits, or the traffic survey indicated for the streets in question, but I heard one person say that the speed limit was 45, and they wanted it lowered to 30. And that's not possible unless it surveys at that speed. We do have a little bit of leeway that we can lower the speed limit five miles per hour lower if the traffic survey indicates a number that's between, you know, 40 and 30. So we could lower that a little bit. Five miles an hour is the maximum that we could lower. So did any of those indicate that they needed to be lowered depending, based on the survey?
Well, we haven't resurveyed these roads recently. That we have within the time limit that is required in order to establish the speed limit, as you mentioned, but we haven't done any resurveys recently. There is one portion of Del Rey, though, that I believe as part of our traffic calming package, we were proposing to change the speed limit to 25, because it meets the residential criteria that allows for the 25 mile an hour limit.
That means the driveways are close enough together.
Right, so that was part of the, the package of traffic calming measures that we had proposed, in addition to the, the lane lines, the shoulder lines that were recommended. And we were also planning, and, and what was a part of the, the package as well, was to install the VCOM signs, the radar feedback signs, at a couple of different locations in the neighborhood as well. So we did actually present a, a package of traffic calming measures in addition to the proposed always stops. And Jerry, is that the, the, the section of Del Rey that was proposed for 25 is?
Yeah, the section that's proposed on Del Rey is Caia-Pina Colada to Avenida Del Raposo. And that's where we, we found, and our traffic engineer, Will Dan Engineering, reviewed that segment when we were going through the traffic calming process, and, and they felt that there were certain conditions under the vehicle code that allowed that section to be considered a residential area. Because as you mentioned, the driveways are closer, there's a lack of turnaround areas. People have to back into the roadway, as was mentioned earlier. There's cer, certain other conditions that are, lend themselves more to a residential area than the rural nature.
And all of those are determined by state law, which we have to follow.
Those are all determined by state law, and that's, you know, that, that caveat is in there, and that's how our traffic engineer determined that to be a 25-mile prima facie speed limit. And by the way, those, those speed limits, along with the 25 miles, another engineering traffic survey will be coming to you in May. So you'll have time to consider that. Another clarification, it was brought up that, that the portions of Del Rey are 30, and yes, in fact, there are portions on Del Rey that are 30, is from Caia-Pina Colada over to Via Norte, as mentioned. And that was lowered from 35 to 30 several years ago, based on an engineering and traffic survey.
So that would be within the five miles per hour restriction that we have for the survey? So lowering it even more would be precluded until we do another survey, at least?
Right, and so one of the things that we're looking at, too, is, is that with the installation of these traffic calming measures, as you all know, we've done it in other areas in the city, and they've been very helpful in reducing speeds, that we, we would be mandated to resurvey that area, once the striping goes in. So then, based on that, we might be able to achieve those lower speed limits, those lower posted speed limits.
So here's the scenario, and, and we've heard from many people that traffic has increased in speed. If we do a survey and traffic truly has increased in speed, we are required to raise the speed limit.
We're required to post a speed limit as close to that 85th percentile speed, given any other circumstances that may lower that speed back down to five miles an hour.
So by doing so, you know, you may end up with a speed that's higher than it is now. So as we did many times when I was on the traffic commission, we initiated the traffic calming measures. And what they do is visually narrow the road, because the wider a road is and the longer and straighter it is, the faster traffic goes. So by narrowing it, that naturally slows down speed limits.
That's correct.
And then what else?
Well, by doing that, and then we're going to do the VCOM signs, and then that also helps, you know, to remind motorists of, of the speed limit, the posted speed limit within the area. And that also, at other locations, that had also been a very successful program, and, you know, along with the striping to, to reduce the posted speed limit.
Okay, so at the, at the very worst, by putting in the traffic calming measures, we expect it, and it usually does calm traffic and slow things down, right?
Right.
Then, if that is still not acceptable, if we still feel like cars are exceeding speeds, then we could do another survey. And if cars indeed have slowed down because of those traffic measures, that would be a good or a positive indication for that survey, because maybe then we could lower the speed limit, if the 85th percentile came in lower, correct?
That's correct.
Then we could lower the speed limit. I would not recommend doing a survey right now, because if cars are going fast, we're going to have to raise it. The 85th percentile is going to be higher. So there are ways to do this that really will prove to be more effective than other ways. And first of all, putting the traffic calming measures in, and you, you really will see a difference. We have in almost every case in the city. And then we'll see how that is, and if it's still having an issue, then I would recommend that we do the survey and see how it is, and then perhaps we'd be able to lower.
Right, and then also, it was brought up about Avenida Barca, and that, that street was also, had been posted at 35, and it's now down to 30.
Okay. But that's what, within the, the original survey limits, and we really can't go any lower?
That's correct.
Okay, so that's where we are.
Councilmember Schwank.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilmember Edwards and Jerry sort of just answered what I was going to say, but, but I think, like, you know, if we're aggressive with traffic calming measures, you're going to see, or we're going to resurvey and see those speeds decrease. So, you know, be patient, I guess, is, is what I could say with, and we've seen it on Los Arena. We've seen it on Solana Way as well, where we do striping, narrows that roadway, slows the traffic down.
A lot.
You know, I guess I am slightly concerned. You have some residents saying, you know, we don't want a stop sign, and we do want a stop sign, and, and we're getting a stop sign, but we don't want the stop sign. So, you know, do, if we put a stop sign in, you know, sort of reevaluating that down the road and then removing, it's probably a bigger deal. I mean, would it be feasible to, you know, do these surveys and restripe and, and then, and hold off on those? Is that, is that an option?
Well, that's, that's kind of the tact that the traffic commission took with the other two locations. They, they wanted us to look at, you know, reevaluate the situation once the striping went in.
Yeah.
And so, part of that, too, is because we're providing an edge line, which is effectively will be a seven-foot buffer area.
Right.
You know, they, the thought was that, you know, the vehicles could edge out to compensate for that lack of visibility at those two locations. As you saw in the slide, the one at Avenida Buenos Fuerte is a little more challenging than that, and, and, but, you know, as the wish of the council, if that's the direction you want us to go, we'll certainly entertain that as well.
Dr. Ryan.
Yeah, just, you know, Marian, I appreciate the comments on the, uh, setting the speed limits, because that's always, always a challenge every time we have these conversations, to explain. But, but I, I tend to agree with Mr. Schwank down there that, you know, I'd, I'd hate to see us go down a path where, especially if it's, you know, blocking personal driveways and that kind of thing, and given the volume of traffic out there, I'd hate to see that become a, a, you know, predominant feature in front of the gentleman's house and, and his neighbors. So, you know, so, you know, glad to hear that the calming measures are, you know, sort of a first line of, you know, defense on all of this. I'd, I'd also say, one, you know, Ms. Peterson came up and, and while not on the agenda, spoke about the stormwater runoff issue. I don't want to lose sight of that. I'd like to see if, you know, maybe the city manager's office, Public Works, could reach out and have that conversation, too. Can't really talk about it here tonight, because it's not on the agenda. But, you know, I'd like to, at, at least as we start to contemplate those, you know, road improvements in the community, to, to have that conversation and see what we might be able to do to help resolve that issue.
I'm ready to craft a motion if you'd like.
Sure. Are you done, Dr. Ryan? Okay. And then I just have a, just a quick question. Mr. Kramer came up, and, and he had indicated that the cars are going to stop right in front of his house. You know, we put up these stop signs, you know, as a way to create safety, but there's also repercussions from putting up stop signs. It means cars are going to stop. If you get two or three cars stopping, you get boom boxes, you get sometimes loud exhaust, you, sometimes you get exhaust smells. So how do we, what do we tell Mr. Kramer here that we've just about to, okay, he's, he sits at a T-intersection, and by happenstance, we're going to put a stop sign there? How do we mitigate his impact? How, how can we soften the impact to him? Any ideas? Was that even considered?
Quite frankly, it was not, and there really isn't much that can be done because of the fact that his driveway is located where it is in relation to that intersection. There really is not much we can do. We can possibly slightly move the location of the stop limit line and the stop sign, but it's not going to be a significant distance. So there really is not a whole lot we can do about where that stop would be located.
Ms. Edwards.
So if I understand correctly, there were two stop signs that are being considered due to line-of-sight issues. And, right? Is that correct?
Three.
Three? Three for the?
Three, but only, only one made it to, to approval process tonight.
Okay. And the, the stop sign in question now, is that one that is, was that the one, one that was approved because of line-of-sight issues?
Correct.
Okay. Line-of-sight is a whole other thing, because it, it's a valid condition that warrants looking at for a stop sign. And especially if we reviewed different ones, and this was the only one that rose to the limit. So it's a matter of blocking the driveway, right? More so, I mean, he's going to have noise and all of that, but the blocking the driveway, that's not great. And especially because Meadowview is limited in its ingress and egress. You only have so many ways to get in and out, so it's not like that you, you know, not like you can go a different way. So it's a line-of-sight issue. Is there anything we can do as far as trimming shrubbery or any of that to help the line-of-sight issue?
Well, it would, it would be an aggressive trimming of shrubbery.
Yeah.
We still would be faced with the crest of that hill. As we were sitting out there evaluating, you know, a vehicle comes over, and as mentioned earlier, yes, they're speeding there, and they come over that hill pretty fast, and it doesn't really give you a lot of decision time. So that was, you know, our primary concern with that. And certainly, in any of one of the locations that we looked at, you know, where we had shrubbery and landscaping, and, you know, all that can be trimmed back, but it's, you know, it's.
So it's the hill that causes, it's the hill that causes the line-of-sight issue, really? And even if the speed's lower by five miles an hour, they're still going to come over the hill and?
Well, yeah, even if the posted speed limit gets lowered by five miles an hour, you know, I think it'd be prudent for us to evaluate site distance based on, you know, prevailing speeds and not so much the posted speed limit. And that's what we did to most of the locations.
Okay, so we're dealing with reality, not with what we wish reality were?
Right, and we're, we're trying to be conservative on the, on the safety aspect of it, you know? That's kind of where we ended up.
Unfortunately, I don't, I don't have an answer for that one, if it's really a safety issue. Were there any accidents at that intersection? Did it meet the warrants for accidents?
No, none, none of the accidents, none of the intersections met warrants for accidents. You know, and that, a lot of that is attributed to the fact that, you know, familiarity with the roadway. People are familiar with what's going on and what to expect. Even those that are pulling out are, you know, know what to expect. It was mentioned earlier, yes, we, we are aware that we didn't meet or didn't justify the minimum volume warrants, but.
Volume, or, okay.
Yeah, volume or other conditions, or even accidents. But the one thing that, you know, that our residential multiway stop signs allows us to do our warrants, allow us to use some flexibility when there are visibility concerns. And that, you know, not only is that prevalent with our own warrants analysis, but it's also, you know, part of the Caltrans deal, that if you have visibility issues, you know, you, you can justify a stop sign for that.
So that's going to be one. Is that a three-way stop, or is it just a one?
It will, well, yeah, it'd be a three-way stop.
Three-way stop. So if, and it's a T-intersection?
That's correct.
So is he talking about the stop sign, the single stop sign that goes into the T? Or is he talking about the main thoroughfare, where there will be two stop signs backing up into his driveway?
It'll be, it'll be on Del Rey that will, we're adding the two stop signs. We already have a single stop sign.
I was hoping it was on this, you know, yeah.
So it's an always stop.
On the neighborhood collector rather than the arterial. Okay. Okay, I don't have an answer for this. Sorry, I tried.
It's a tough one to deal with, and, you know, in other locations where we have had T-intersections, where there's driveways, we, as Pat mentioned earlier, we've been able to adjust the stop sign a little bit. We didn't look at this one particularly that close, to see if there is, you know, a little bit of leeway there, but, you know, I think it's going to be a kind of tough, because the driveways are close to that intersection.
Yeah. Sorry, I don't have an answer, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you for the, for the effort. If these work out, are they going to be considered permanent? Or, or are we doing this as an experiment?
Oh, the stop signs? No. Once they go in, as you all know, they're, they're there.
Okay.
It's more difficult to take them out than it is to put them in.
Fair enough. Is the orientation of Mr. Kramer's home in such a way that? Is the orientation of Mr. Kramer's home in such a way that maybe some shrubs?
Yeah, I was gonna go there too.
Maybe a short wall, something of that nature. In fact, um, maybe, Mr. Kramer, are you still here? Could you come up real quick?
Could we move his driveway?
Maybe you can, uh, address that real quick. Trying to, listen, I get it, car stopping in front of your house, it affects quality of life. It seems like everything's lining up where this is where it needs to go, but let's see if we can try to soften it for you a little bit. Can you give us some information along those lines?
So, uh, where my driveway is, is, I mean, there's, there're shrubs on either side of it. It, where a car would stop, would literally, they'd look to their right and be looking into my driveway and to?
I've got it.
Go ahead.
Jerry, could we paint lines on the street and say, "Do not block driveway"?
Well, depending on where his driveway is at, we could look at that, but, you know, the limit line, wherever we look, I'm not sure where the limit line's gonna end up, like, so we didn't look at it that closely to be able to determine where the limit line's going to end up.
So, so the line just?
Unfortunately, on these pictures we have here, I can't really see it.
Yeah, I looked on my phone and I still couldn't really tell how far it was. How far is your driveway from the corner?
Where the stop sign would be relative to every other intersection, it would be about three or four, five feet.
Oh, so it's right on the corner?
It's right there. Yeah.
That's bad too.
And your, and so, the car would, would be right in front of your driveway when it stops?
Yes.
And we can't put the stop sign on the other side of his driveway, on the leading side?
If you did that, it would be, you know, there's a neighbor's driveway.
Neighbor's driveway? Doggone County or Riverside, they're the ones that approved this.
Yeah.
I mean, can we not try the calming measures first and?
Well, that was gonna be my next, that was actually gonna be the motion that I made, was to try the calming first and see what happens with that if we still are concerned with line of sight issues. And Jerry, how do we determine, so let's say we put the calming measures in and they're, and they're effective, how do we determine they're effective enough to mitigate the line of sight? Or is there mitigation for line of sight? I mean, obviously, if cars are going five miles an hour, line of sight's not gonna be an issue, but?
Well, in this case, uh, again, presenting that seven-foot or eight-foot buffer, I think in this, I think here in this area, we're gonna do an eight-foot parking brake, but providing that buffer area allows vehicles to pull out a little bit further as long as there's not a vehicle parked right there at the corner. So that would mitigate part of the visibility issue. Like I said, at this location, you still have the crest of that hill, but it might give you a little more decision time.
So, if, it, I, I don't know what the will of the council is, but right now, I think we're kind of at loggerheads, but I always wanna go air on the side of, um, we wanna do the least amount we can to achieve the result that we need. And so if we can reduce the speeds on Del Ray to a sufficient, uh, number that it, the line of sight is mitigated, then that will not require a stop sign at, on, at that intersection, at least on Del Ray, and that would not block your driveway. So, um, I would like to see, and my motion would be to, um, affect the traffic calming measures first and see what the result is. And Jerry, what's the typical time to go back for a, for a check or a survey or whatever, after you install traffic calming?
Could I, could I add, uh?
Sure.
Our plan as far as installing the other traffic calming, the striping and the V-COM signs? We have a, uh, road rehab repaving project for Del Ray and Villanorte. Uh, we just opened bids on that. We'll be presenting the, a contract to the council in May, and the construction of that will take place in the summer this year. So by, towards the end of summer, I'll say, that repaving and restriping would be done. So it would be, say, in the fall or winter is when we would be able to re-study the road.
And so obviously, speeds are gonna slow down while we're, there's road construction going on. So I don't know what that's gonna do for your driveway backup, but obviously, the city will work with you on that. I would make the motion, Mr. Mayor, um, and council members, to proceed with the traffic calming measures, and then let's measure the result when the time is appropriate, when the road, when the road improvements are done. Right?
Is there a second?
Yeah, I'll second that.
Seconded by, uh, Councilmember Dr. Ron. I do wanna hear from, uh, Traffic Safety Commissioner Brad Sullivan. Brad, what do you have to say?
Yeah, thank you. Um, there was a couple other, uh, complicating factors at Del Ray and Calle Buenos Aires. Calle Buenos Aires, as it comes to the intersection, is a hill. So, that hill?
Yeah.
Makes you at a, 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 in a decline trying to look up a hill. And then, the other problem was, for those going westbound, is not only is there a hill, there's a curve right there at the hill.
Yeah, I saw that.
So, so there was a lot of complicating issues as far as line of sight, and, uh, so that's what we took in.
I certainly understand the commission's, you know, concern for that, and that those are legitimate concerns. But hopefully, we can slow traffic down enough that those won't be an issue, and I'd like to try that first. Uh, then get the road improvements in place and then do a survey and see how we're doing. And you still may end up with a stop sign right there, but we'll do the best we can.
I appreciate it, thank you. Is there any further comment, Dr. Ron?
Oh, just one, is, as you're talking about the V-COM and all the traffic calming measures, you know, I didn't notice from the, uh, presentation where exactly those would go, but I imagine that, you know, placing it closer to that intersection, obviously, sort of, you know, if, if the idea was on the entire circle, you know, to sort of distribute those based on the idea that, you know, I'm telling you stuff you already know, but, you know, based on the idea that the stop sign was going in, if we're pulling out off the table, then let's try and advantage that section of road as much as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah, we had, we had, uh, eight locations that we were going to put V-COM signs, so they're not all gonna, all ain't gonna be up at the same time, but we would be rotating them and we can certainly look at this. I guess the one last thing I could probably add to this, this is part of that section where we're gonna do that prima facie twenty-five speed limit. So, again, if we can get the prevailing speed down, that may be helpful.
Yes.
Maybe get your neighbor to trim that palm tree. That would be helpful too, but we don't really, I mean, that's a, that, that would be a severe thing to look at.
Oh, yeah, I see.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your vote. What was that? Oh, hold on, just go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Just, just for clarification, the item for consideration this evening is not necessarily the traffic calming measures. It's, it's singularly the installation of the stop sign at this intersection or not.
Okay.
And, and so, the recommendation would be to pass the resolution as presented, which would install the stop signs, or you could reject the resolution and wherein the stop sign would not be considered, or you can just push it back to staff for further evaluation after the traffic calming measures have been in place for a while.
I'm good with that.
I like that one, yeah.
Can you amend your motion?
Yeah, I will amend my motion to be exactly that. Thank you, Mr. Assistant City Manager.
Thank you for the clarity.
Thank you.
Okay, please register your votes.
Now, is everybody confused about what we're doing? No, you got it, okay.
And that passes four, uh, with one absent. I know Mr. Stewart's probably filled with coffee in the back. All right, welcome back, Mr. Stewart.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody, for coming out. Okay, Mr. Stewart, we missed you.
Yes.
All right.
I wanna say Alex and Josie are great neighbors too.
There is a, there is a monitor back there, so you can see.
All righty. Well, uh, Mr. Stewart's back just in time. The City Council wears many hats. Uh, one of them is the, uh, Community Services District Meeting. So at this time, I'm going to recess the Temecula City Council meeting and turn the gavel over to President of the Community Services District Meeting, that's President James Stewart.
And I will call to order the Temecula Community Service District Meeting. Madam Secretary, uh, please note, we're all here. Are there any public comments?
There are not.
Okay. Uh, so on to the consent calendar, item number eighteen, approve action minutes of April ninth, two thousand nineteen. Number nineteen, approve an agreement for consult, consultant services with RJM Design Group, Inc. in the amount of two hundred and fifty-six thousand, two hundred dollars for the completion of the community service master plan and appropriate twenty-six thousand, two hundred for measure, from Measure S funds to cover contracted amount and reimbursement expenses.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded, please vote. And that passes five zero. And just, just for the public's knowledge, that, um, uh, completion of the Community Service Master Plan, the original master plan was done in nineteen ninety-three. So, we are long overdue to update this master plan, because we had thirty-two thousand people in the city of Temecula at that time in only five parks. So, um, we have considerably more than that, and so it's, it's definitely warranted, uh, to do this master plan. So, uh, Directors, do we have a Director's Report?
Yes, we do, Mr. President. And also excited about that Community Services Master Plan, so thank you for that. Arbor Day was mentioned earlier, so again, this Saturday, um, April twenty-seventh at ten a.m., come join staff from the Fund Departments, that's Public Works and Community Services, as we celebrate the importance of trees by helping us plant trees for Arbor Day at the Temecula Duck Pond. Although a bit later this year, please mark your calendar for the Eleventh Annual Temecula Special Games on Saturday, May fourth, from nine-thirty a.m. to one o'clock p.m., and that's at the Great Oak High School Football Stadium. Now, this ranges from two hundred participants and about four hundred volunteers. Special Games were designed for athletes of all ages with developmental disabilities to participate in non-competitive games in a supportive and loving environment. Mr. Mayor, you know that this holds a special place. This was actually the first Temecula event that I attended, met you there, and, and so, again, if you haven't attended, please come on out and join, join us then. To participate as an athlete or as a volunteer buddy, you can still register online at temeculacca.gov/specialgames, which brings us to now the final Broadway in the Park Series for the season, which will be held at the musically themed Sunset Park, and that's on Sunday, May fifth, from three to four p.m. So come on out and enjoy an afternoon of family-friendly entertainment, featuring a variety of Broadway show tunes in a beautiful setting. Again, that's Sunset Park. And that, Mr. President, concludes my report.
Thank you. General Matters Report.
Nothing further tonight, Mr. President.
Uh, Board of Directors, any reports?
One quick. I just wanna say thank you, uh, Mr. Hawkins, to your staff, excellent activities, uh, for Easter Sunday. A lot of egg hunts, I think, what was Friday, there was the Easter Egg Glow for the teens.
Yes, the teen glow.
I heard some pretty major cool prizes were given out. So, uh, yeah, it seems, uh, seems like it was a great event for all. We had a special needs Easter egg hunt.
Yeah.
So, well done, let your staff know.
Thank you, sir.
You betcha.
All right, then I will adjourn this meeting until Tuesday, May fourteenth, two thousand nineteen.
And I'm gonna reconvene the Temecula City Council meeting. This is the public hearing portion of our meeting. Um, I'm gonna read the rules of, uh, public hearing. Each person may submit written comments to the City Council before a public hearing or may appear and be heard in support of or in opposition to the approval of the projects at the time of the hearing. If you challenge any of the projects in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city clerk at or prior to the public hearing. This is item number twenty, approve fiscal year two thousand nineteen dash twenty, Community Development Block Grant, also known as CDBG, Annual Action Plan Funding. We have a staff report. Hello, Lynn.
Hello. Technical difficulties. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Nigar and members of the council. Uh, tonight, I am here to present the two thousand nineteen twenty Community Development Block Grant or CDBD, uh, CDBG Annual Action Plan. For context, and for those of you who are unfamiliar with our program, let me provide some background of the CDBG program. CDBG is a federally funded program that strives to create the development of viable urban communities by promoting, preserving, and assisting in the development of affordable housing, improving and expanding public infrastructure and facilities, and providing and improving access to public services. CDBG activities must meet one of three national objectives that are listed on the screen. Funding in the city of Temecula is typically allocated towards the first objective, activities that benefit low and moderate income persons. In two thousand twelve, City Council adopted its first Consolidated Plan to become an entitlement city, which authorized Temecula to receive CDBG funds directly from the federal government. Our CDBG program is guided by two main documents, the Consolidated Plan and the Annual Action Plan. Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that is used as a general framework for the city to address, to assess its housing and community development needs and identify its priority projects for its funding allocation. It also includes a market analysis, needs assessment, and strategic plan. The assessment of fair housing is a relatively new feature, and it determines fair housing activities throughout the community. As I mentioned, the Consolidated Plan is a five-year plan that demonstrates how the city will meet certain community and housing needs as identified through an extensive public outreach process. Each project or program that is funded through CDBG funds must meet at least one of the Consolidated Plan goals or priorities approved by City Council in two thousand seventeen. The Consolidated Plan has identified eleven priorities. The priorities are intended to be broad, uh, as the needs of the city may change over time. Each funded program must meet at least one of these priorities. Promote the development of affordable housing, preserve the existable, uh, existing affordable housing stock, ensure equal access to housing opportunities, provide public services for low and moderate income residents, provide public services for residents with special needs, provide public services for the homeless and those at risk of homelessness, provide public services for seniors and veterans, improve neighborhoods' public facilities and infrastructure, promote economic opportunity, amend the city's land use and zoning code to promote housing, and improve access to public facilities for individuals with disabilities. As I mentioned, these are meant to be all-encompassing, so that the city can remain flexible over the Consolidated Plan cycle. Now I will hone in my focus on the upcoming nineteen twenty program year. While the Consolidated Plan provides an overarching framework for our CDBG goals and activities, each subsequent action plan defines specific projects for each program year and how the city intends to utilize the, uh, the allotted federal funds to address national objectives and priority needs identified in the Consolidated Plan. HUD requires extensive community outreach prior to the adoption of the Annual Action Plan each year. During our application period in November, staff held two technical workshops, both on November twenty-ninth, to assist applicants on the application process. Staff met with the Finance Committee consisting of Mayor Pro Tem Stewart and Councilmember Edwards on March sixth for funding recommendations, which are reflected in the action plan. We also had a thirty-day public review period, and tonight, we have a public hearing with the entire City Council. So I have some good news to share. Between the Finance Committee meeting on March sixth and our public hearing this evening, we found out that the city will receive a slightly higher allocation than last year, which is unusual. Uh, this is actually the second year in a row that it increased. We are expected to receive five hundred and fifty-eight thousand, four hundred and forty-one dollars in CDBG funding for two thousand nineteen twenty. The allocation is broken up into three areas. So the city may spend up to twenty percent of the allocation, approximately a hundred and twelve thousand dollars, on administrative costs. This includes a portion of staff time, uh, that it takes to administer the program, as well as our consultants' time. A maximum of fifteen percent, or approximately eighty-four thousand dollars, may be allocated for public services, and the remainder, approximately three hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, may be allocated towards, uh, capital improvement projects. The city received nine public service funding requests. The city also received one request from Habitat for Humanity for their housing, uh, for their critical, uh, home repair program, and that may utilize capital funds, and I'll discuss that in a few slides. As I previously discussed, a maximum of approximately eighty-four thousand dollars may be allocated towards public services. Uh, the CDBG funds are spent entirely on low and moderate income Temecula residents. Because our allocation is slightly higher than when this was presented to the Subcommittee, each service provider that was not recommended? each service provider that was not recommended for full funding by the Subcommittee will receive a slightly higher allocation. The slide above demonstrates the Finance Committee's recommendation, as well as the final recommended allocation. As such, the funding recommendations are as follows. Five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for Community Mission of Hope's Housing and Food Resource Center. Fifty-five-thirty-eight for Hospice of the Valley's Senior Assistance Program. Fifty-five-thirty-eight for Safe Alternatives for Everyone, also known as SAFE, Creating Safe Families Program. Fifty-five-thirty-eight for Voices for Children Court Appointed Special Advocate Program, also known as CASA. Five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for the K-9 Support Team Service Dogs for Disabled Persons Program. Twenty-five thousand dollars for the city of Temecula's Homeless Prevention and Diversion Program. Five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for the Boys and Girls Club Before and After School Program. Five-thousand-five-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars for the Assistant Leagues Operation School Bill Program, and twenty thousand dollars for the Fair Housing Council's Comprehensive Fair Housing Program. The remainder of our CDBG program, our allocation, is approximately three-hundred-and-sixty-three-thousand dollars, and it could be used towards capital improvement projects and housing activities. As I mentioned earlier, the city received one application for housing activities from Habitat for Humanity for their Critical Home Repair Program. Because of the demonstrated need for these services in the community to keep homes affordable, as well as the increase in the CDBG allocation, it is recommended that forty thousand dollars be allocated towards this program. The Finance Committee recommended that the remainder of the allocation be used for funding high-priority projects, as identified in our ADA Transition Plan. With that, staff recommends that City Council approve the 2019-20 Annual Action Plan as an application to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development for funding under the Federal Community Development Block Grant Program. That concludes my presentation, and I'm available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Right now, are there any questions of staff?
One to clarify.
Ms. Edwards.
Thank you. Lynn, Habitat for Humanity and forty thousand dollars, not only does that help with their repairs for their homes, but don't those homes qualify for our affordable housing component? Because we're required to have so many units of affordable housing, and don't those count towards that quota?
So, one of the reports that we filed with the state, with HCD, Housing and Community Development, is our annual progress report for our housing element, and the number of units that are rehabbed utilizing city funds can be counted. So, these units are counted towards that number.
Good, so it's really a double value for the people who live in the homes, plus we get to count it towards our quota, state quota. Thank you.
Any other questions right now? Very good. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Mr. Mayor, we have one speaker, Jessica Murros.
Mr. Mayor and City Council, my name is Jessica Munoz. I'm the Riverside County Executive Director for Voices for Children. First and foremost, I'm here to thank the city for your past and present support through the CDBG program, and to respectfully request that you follow staff recommendations to continue to partner with us in the coming fiscal year. I am thrilled to report to you that in addition to the three children who received life-changing advocacy through the city funding, we've served additional Temecula children by raising the funds on our own. What life-changing advocacy am I referring to? Voices for Children is the Court Appointed Special Advocate, or CASA, program for Riverside County. That means that we are the only nonprofit organization with a memorandum of understanding with the Superior Court here to recruit and train and support very special volunteers who are assigned to advocate for children in foster care. These boys and girls are removed from their homes due to abuse and neglect, and many people are surprised to learn that when that happens, a legal proceeding takes place, and in addition to their social workers, the children and their families are represented by attorneys, and there are judges that make critical decisions that will change the course of these children's lives. Our volunteers come alongside these children by providing them with individual and holistic advocacy. Unlike the social workers and others who are managing unwieldy case loads, our volunteers advocate for one child or one sibling group at a time, are able to build a relationship with the child, create a caring, consistent adult presence, sometimes for the first time in their life, and then leverage that relationship by writing reports to the court and advocating for their best interests. With your help, we've not only served children here in the city of Temecula, but in four years, we've grown our program to serve almost four-hundred children so far this year, and expect to exceed that number by June. So, while the funds that you provide us go directly to Temecula children, you are part of our greater effort to support and advocate for children in foster care in Riverside County. We thank you very, very much, and ask that you continue to support us next year. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, any further speakers?
No further speakers.
So, at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and go to council discussion, if any, or entertain a motion?
Motion, move approval.
Second.
That was Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Mayor Protem Stewart. Please cast your votes. And that passes five zero. Moving on to the next item, item twenty-one, approve update to existing uptown Temecula Specific Plan, New Streets in Lufi. Can we have a staff report?
Yes, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. Tonight, before you is the Uptown Temecula New Streets in Lufi Update Ordinance. Just for some background, the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan was adopted back in November of two thousand and fifteen, and during the visioning leading up to that approval, the community identified the importance of improving transportation, including walking, biking, and transit throughout the specific plan area. In addition, the community also identified the need for internal street connections to realize the future urban intensification of the specific plan area. So, because of that, new internal streets were identified to enhance connectivity and traffic flow. There we go. You got it now?
It's a major award.
All right. To create more pedestrian-friendly and walkable neighborhoods, as demonstrated by the exhibit on the right. With the identification of new streets in the uptown specific plan area, a mechanism was needed in order to assist in the funding of the future street connections, and on December eighth, two thousand and fifteen, the City Council adopted an ordinance establishing the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan New Streets in Lufi Program. Since that time, since the adoption of the in-lufi in two thousand and fifteen, staff has identified certain land uses that require special classification considerations. In order to address that issue, we've contracted with Kaiser Marston Associates, who we have here tonight, to update the New Streets in Lufi Nexus Study, with the goal of recognizing the expanded uses and to establish a new fee amount for all the used categories. So, currently, the Nexus Study includes four categories, residential, office, commercial, retail, and hotel, and the proposed change would add an industrial mini-storage parking lot or parking structure. The Nexus Study-supported in-lufis, or full burden fee, represent between two-point-four and six-point-five percent of development costs, but KMA recommended, and the City Council also agreed previously, to establishing fees that represent no more than three percent of the development cost. That's to hopefully ensure that this fee doesn't actually become something that renders individual projects infusible. So, here you can see the current fee for each of the current four used categories, residential, office, commercial, and hotel. What you see below is the proposed fee structure, where we've added in industrial, mini-storage, parking lot, and parking structure, and by adding in these three new categories, it effectively lowers the fee for the existing category, so it is ultimately a fee lowering exercise. By law, this, the nature of this fee is required to come to council two times. The first was March twenty-sixth, which was a receiving file. The second is tonight, where the council is actually considering adoption of the ordinance. This ordinance is coming to you with the recommendation of the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan Ad Hoc Subcommittee, which is made up of Mayor Nigar and Councilmember Ron, and with that, staff recommends an ordinance of the City Council, adding the definitions of industrial uses, mini-storage uses, and parking lot, parking structure, and updating the Uptown Temecula in-Lufi. That concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Luke. Is there any questions of staff? I don't see any questions. This is a public hearing, so I'll open the public hearing at this time. Madam City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
We do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so at this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn it on over to council discussion.
I'm ready to make a motion if there isn't one.
So, let's take the resolution first. Item, let's see. Go ahead, and let's take item one, Resolution Number Nineteen, next in line. Do you have a motion?
Yeah, move approval.
Second.
Was that you, Mr. Swank?
It was.
Okay, so a motion by Councilmember Edwards, seconded by Councilmember Swank. And that passes five zero. Item number two on this matter is an ordinance, so I'll need a motion to direct the city attorney to introduce the ordinance.
I'll move approval to introduce.
That was Councilmember Edwards.
Second.
Do I have a second?
Matt.
Yes, sir.
That was a nice second. Thank you very much. Mr. City Attorney, can you introduce the ordinance?
Yes, this is an ordinance of the City Council of the city of Temecula, amending section fifteen point twenty point zero two zero of the Temecula Municipal Code by adding the definitions of commercial uses, industrial uses, mini-storage uses, and parking lot structure, and deleting the definition of retail uses by amending section fifteen point two zero point zero three zero by applying the Uptown Temecula in-Lufi and credits to those amended uses, and finding that this ordinance does not constitute a project under the California Environmental Quality Act pursuant to CECLA Guidelines, section one-five-seven-three-eight B four.
Thank you. If you can please register your votes. Somebody needs to make the motion, press the motion button.
I didn't, I never saw a motion button. I haven't seen one lately, but I moved approval.
All right, well, somebody else press the motion button.
Does somebody see it? Yeah, I don't have one, Randy.
Good, now somebody else do the second.
There we go.
There, I've got my vote, but I don't have a motion.
I think your motion got stolen from the slip. What happened? That passes five zero. Okay, going to item number twenty-two, approve uptown Temecula Specific Plan Amendments and Streetscape and Sidewalk Improvement Standards. And you know, just as a, I know the, no, come on up, coming up for the staff report, but a lot of people may not know what we refer to as uptown Temecula. That's from Rancho California Road North down to Winchester and points in between. That's what's considered uptown Temecula.
There we go. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Councilmember. I have with me here Lee Kyle from Spurlock Landscape Architects, our consultants that helped us on this portion of the plan that I'll go over here shortly, and she's going to give a presentation for you as well. Okay, so we've got three basic pieces of this presentation. One is the background, which I'll go over briefly on the plan, just to give you an update and what we've encountered during its implementation for its first few years. We have some proposed amendments, and then we'll get into the Streetscape and Sidewalk Improvement Standards. The specific plan was adopted in November of two thousand and fifteen, and with that, the council directed staff to bring back an update to the plan this year on the status of its implementation, as well as to prepare a Streetscape and Beautification Plan for Uptown Little bit of background on where the plan is located, it's bounded to the south by Rancho California Road, to the east by Interstate fifteen, north by Cherry Street, or the future French Valley Interchange, and then to the west by Diaz Road. There are six districts and two overlay areas that are represented by the different colors within the plan, shown on that image. The plan is a form-based code, similar to that of uptown, I'm sorry, old-town Temecula, in that the focuses on the placement of the buildings and parking in relationship to the public realm, which is the street sidewalks. This creates an urban and walkable pedestrian-friendly environment. Since it was adopted, we've had one project, actually, we've had three projects that have gone through entitlement. One of them is under construction right now, it is the State Bridge Suites, located on Jefferson Avenue. Two entitled projects are the San Joaquin Valley College Parking Lot and the Winchester-Jefferson Hotel. We also have two other projects going through entitlement process right now, the Hilton Garden Inn and the Henderson Restaurant and Brewery. We've also had multiple conversations with property owners and real estate brokers regarding non-conforming land uses, as well as opportunities that the plan presents. Those conversations that we've had with property owners and the experience we've had going through the entitlement process has led to some proposed amendments, which I'm going to review with you right now. So, we are proposing to add clarifying language to deal with illegal non-conforming land use policies. As you may recall, there are very flexible policies in the plan right now that allow for legal non-conforming land uses to continue to operate in perpetuity until the property owner, business owner, just determines to do something different with their land. We also have policies that allow for the extension of time of a legal non-conforming use in the event that the property is vacant, or a suite is vacant, for an extended period of time. We're proposing to add clarifying language that says that a property owner may lease a vacant suite or building to like non-conforming uses until such time that the building or buildings on site are occupied by only legally permitted uses under the plan. We're also proposing to clarify the build-to line, where the right-of-way exceeds ten feet behind the face of curb. You may recall that the, as I mentioned, it's a form-based code. We specifically state that the building must be placed ten feet behind the property line, or where the right-of-way and property line are. However, we have certain, we have some existing cross-sections within the plan that, as you see in this example here, where the right-of-way extends twelve feet behind the face of curb. If the building is to be placed right at ten feet, we would end up with a twenty-two-foot sidewalk, and that's not the intent of the plan. So, we're proposing to add flexible languages, say that the build-to line may be adjusted accordingly to maintain a twenty-foot sidewalk. So, in this example, instead of placing the build-to line at ten feet behind the property line, it would be placed at eight feet to maintain that twenty-foot sidewalk. We're also proposing clarification on the new street cross-sections. When a new street is proposed, the new street cross-section shall be one of the approved cross-sections in the plan, or a compatible design with the connecting street, and in both cases, they are subject to the review and approval of the city traffic engineer, as well as the Public Works Director. And then lastly, on the proposed amendments, we are proposing to replace the word "should" with "shall" for utility placements. This promotes a pedestrian-friendly design and avoids sidewalk clutter, and again, this is one of the things we learned through the entitlement process of the previous projects that I had mentioned. With that, we're going to go into the proposed uptown Temecula Streetscape and Sidewalk Standards. As I mentioned, Lee Kyle is here, she'll be giving the presentation from here out from Spurlock Landscape Architect. I do want to mention that we had two community workshops with the public to gain input on this portion of the plan. We had extensive coordination with our Public Works Department on the material types and species selected to ensure that they're comfortable with the maintenance requirements of the materials. We've held two meetings with our Planning Commission Subcommittee, as well as four meetings with the City Council Uptown Temecula Ad Hoc Subcommittee. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lee.
Thank you. Good evening. We have been working on the Streetscape Guidelines for a little... We have been working on the streetscape guidelines for a little over a year, we'll call it that, and I'm happy to present it tonight. So the, as Dale said, the uptown neighborhood is divided into six districts with some overlays, and it's quite a geographically large area, so we have set kind of a hierarchy of streets and gateways, and I'm going to just walk through those in kind of a high level this evening. So the first thing to talk about are the gateways, and these are principally the entry points to the uptown district from the north and south along Jefferson, as well as key intersections that are formed sort of sub-gateways into the various districts within Uptown Temecula. So the north and south alleys share sort of similar geometry, including a median along Jefferson, which is a great opportunity for sort of accent planting. They also are adjacent to Marietta Creek, and so on the creek side, we're proposing an alley of, an alley, in other words, two rows of trees, of sycamore trees, a riparian tree. On the north side, it's adjacent to the open space that's potentially a future sportfield. On the south side, it's in closer proximity to the creek and has a very sort of distinct kind of creekside riparian character to it. So we think that the sycamores make a very nice connection to that. On the right is a rendering of what that will look like. The widened pedestrian promenade is located between the two trees, and on the creek side, there's a soft edge with plant materials and boulders that sort of connect it to that creek character. In the center is the median with accent planting, as I described, and we're proposing a signature median tree of an Oklahoma Western Red Bud. This is a deciduous tree with really outstanding flowers in early spring. It's native to the southwest, it's very drought tolerant, and it makes a, just a, you know, terrific pop of color. And then the understory planting is a combination of, uh, ground covers, grasses that sort of pick up that riparian character, as well as some seasonal accents like blooming bulbs. The next set of gateways are those intersections that lead into the districts, and there's kind of a host of street sections in different conditions that occur throughout the district. So rather than go through each one in detail, I'm giving you a kind of a summary overview. All of the different conditions sort of carry the same materials in different combinations. So where we have opportunity, there's planting at the corners to just give a little color and accent. Where street geometries preclude that, we have enhanced hardscape and potential opportunities for public art. So the typical components for all of them are enhanced crosswalks, which are stamped asphalt in a brick pattern, and then linear brick pavings at the ballbat that creates the pedestrian crossing, and then the sidewalk treatment, which I'll go into in more detail in a moment, that's consistent with the, with the district that we're, the neighborhood that we're in. So example of the stamped asphalt, the precast concrete pavers, which are a linear paver in a combination of warm tones. Street trees per the district plan, which I'll show you in a moment, and those are variously planted in four-by-six planting areas or four-by-six tree grates, and the tree grates are principally along Jefferson, which is sort of the more urban spine of the district as a whole. Understory planting varies per district, and I'll show you an overview of all the plant materials together so you can get a sense of the cohesiveness of it. So streetscape and sidewalk improvement standards include different paving types and score joint patterns, depending on whether the street is a major district connector, a minor district connector, which is sort of the neighborhood spine as opposed to the district spine as a whole, or a neighborhood street, which are the smaller sort of interstitial streets between the connectors. We have raised medians just in the two locations at the alleys on the north and south. And then we're also showing an overlay of the future streets, which Luke described earlier, and that's, has a broken line and is, for the most part, in magenta. So to clarify, the streets that we're showing, we're showing existing curb-to-curb geometries. We're not proposing any changes within the vehicular right-of-way. And then our streetscape standards just go from the build-to line to the back of curb, and it's this area right here. So the major district connector is Jefferson Avenue, that's the longest street. Establishing a sense of continuity along there is really important, and so we've selected a tree that has kind of a nice, strong canopy and a good sense of presence. It's evergreen, it's a potocarpus, so it will, kind of the geometry of that will read as you go along Jefferson. The paving material is a simple banded pattern, a tone-on-tone contrast of a warm, integrally colored, warm beige concrete with a fine sand finish and a slightly heavier aggregate finish, so you'll read a little bit of banding. And then just on Jefferson, where it is this more urban condition, we have brick pavers in the utility zone to create sort of a nice, tight edge. Trees along Jefferson are planted in tree grates, and we have street and pedestrian lights, so it's a two-headed light on a single pole with arms for banners. The minor district connector and neighborhood streets have a variety of trees, depending on the neighborhood. There's an overlay plan that explains which tree goes where, but generally, a single species per street. So there's a sense of continuity and connection, but it'll vary, you know, street by street. We've got four trees that we're using throughout the district. Brisbane Box, which is relatively narrow evergreen, African Sumac, which has a willow-like texture, Bedrone, which is a native tree, and Crepe Myrtle, which is deciduous with seasonal color. The concrete is all sand finish with that same banding pattern as we saw in Jefferson, and the pedestrian light is just for the pedestrian way, it's not a street light, and it contains a banner for signage. The understory planting, like the trees, will vary depending on what neighborhood we're in, but it's a combination of grasses and compact ground covers that will be sort of easy to maintain and in kind of tidy little clusters under the trees. So the street tree palette throughout the district, this is sort of the totality of the trees that we're proposing. They, it's a mix of deciduous and evergreen, evergreen for the main spine trees, deciduous on some of the neighborhood trees, a little bit of seasonal color thrown in there as well with the Crepe Myrtle and the, and the Red Bud. And the understory planting, as I said, varies from district to district, but you can see from this sort of compilation of all the plant material that we're sort of striving to create continuity within the district so that the, you know, within the neighborhood, so the district as a whole has a sense of sort of cohesiveness in place. Thank you.
Okay, then lastly, the staff recommendation on this. An addendum to the EIR was prepared, which concluded that the proposed changes and additions or modifications do not result in any newer, greater environmental impacts, and therefore, no additional environmental review is required. On March twentieth, two thousand and nineteen, the Planning Commission considered this item and adopted resolution nineteen dash twelve recommending that the City Council approve the proposed Uptown Temecula Specific Plan Amendments and the Uptown Streetscape and Sidewalk Improvement Standards. And with that, as to the recommendation to adopt the ordinance approving what has been presented to you tonight, and that concludes our staff report.
Thank you. Excellent staff report. Are there any questions right now?
I got a question.
Mr. Stewart.
So all this landscaping, is that going to be paid for by the city or is that part of the contractor or the builder who's building out that particular lot?
So the idea is that all the improvements would be done at the time that development comes in, so it would be a condition of approval.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Just a little clarification there, Mr. Councilmember. If the city decided to build a street on its own, then the, then the city would put in the treatments that you were presenting tonight. But mostly, it will be done as private development comes in and develops their frontage.
Any other questions?
Just a couple. Actually, just following on what, what Stu said, so, you know, you can contemplate sections of those streets where you've got development occurring, and then there's still a gap in, in something. And so is there a mechanism there where the city could come in or, or, you know, some sort of solution? So we're not just, you know, dealing with a gap in the continuity if, if, you know, ninety percent of that section's been completed?
Yeah, there is, and that's the fee that was just approved previously. So that fee will, will create a bank of money that the city will be able to use to either reimburse private development for creating a street that they weren't required to construct, or for the city to come in and do it themselves.
Okay, and then, then one other quick one on the plant palette that was selected. I know we went through this before, and we talked a lot about the drought tolerance and some of the features, but, you know, it occurs to me, especially where the flood control area is, and then anything that's closer to Marietta Creek. Have, have we looked at those species as far as sort of a risk for invasive species potential in those natural areas?
Yeah, they're all, none of them are listed on the California native, or county for that matter, native species.
Okay, great, thanks.
Any other questions? Well, this is a public hearing, so at this time I'm going to open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
We do not.
Okay, so at this time I'm going to close the public hearing and entertain comments or a motion.
Absent comments, I move approval.
Second.
All right, and let's see, does this have an ordinance attached to it? Let's have a look. It is. Let's see. Yes, it is. So we need a motion by, who made the motion?
I did, but look.
That was.
It's done.
That was Mary Ann Edwards and Councilmember Ron. Motion and a second to introduce the ordinance, Mr. City Attorney.
This is an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Temecula, amending the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan to clarify the setbacks of buildings and parking spaces, to clarify the placement and or relocation of utilities, to clarify legal non-conforming uses, to include certain land uses as required by state law, to make minor typographical edits, adopt Uptown Temecula Streetscape and Sidewalk Improvement Standards for the Uptown Temecula Specific Plan, which include the specifications for concrete materials, street lighting, street trees, and understory plants, and finding that pursuant to CEQA Guidelines, section one five one six two, and based on the addendum to the original EIR, no further environmental review is required. Long-range planning application number LR sixteen zero two two three and LR one seven, seven, zero seven two four.
Thank you. Please register your votes. Did everybody register? And that passes five zero. It'll come back for a second reading, and then it will become law. All right, moving to, let's see, the next item on the agenda. Item twenty-three, under the business calendar, adopt a resolution reaffirming the principles outlined in the Constitution of the United States of America at the request of Mayor Nigar, yours truly, and Councilmember Ron. Mr. City Manager, you had something you wish to say again?
Yeah, just reiterating what I said on the front end of the meeting. Obviously, the two of you authored this resolution, it's placed at your request, so I'm looking to you for concurrence, but my professional recommendation this evening remains the same, that we hear from the community, you hear from your colleagues, and we have a civil and productive conversation this evening, but that no vote be taken this evening.
Very good. Dr. Ron, you want to lend any comments?
No, I'm looking forward to hearing the dialogue in concurrent with the city manager's recommendation.
Okay, very good. And I'll just lend a little bit of my comments as well. You know, we're very involved and work directly with the federal government and the state government on a number of issues, and the government or the people in this room are actually the closest people to the local government, and therefore, it's good that your local government listen to you and communicate your desires and your thoughts onward up the chain. This is actually where it begins. It's good that we have these discussions. I mean, to discuss the Constitution and all that's in it is probably something that we should do regularly and acknowledge regularly. We do that with the Pledge of Allegiance, we also do that when we sing the National Anthem. I think as often as we can, we should tell the story. I also think we're at a point in our, in our country's history where I think we need to begin to have the dialogue. And what I mean by dialogue is a, is a very productive discussion among our community. We received many emails, both pro to adopt this resolution, quite a number of them, and quite a number of emails to not adopt this resolution. And I think at all times, it's incumbent on us, sitting here as a city council, to make sure we listen to all points of view, because we listen or we represent everybody here in this room and all the citizens of Temecula. Let's see, everybody who put in a speaker slip, we did not put them in any particular order, correct, Madam City Clerk? So they're in the order in which they were put in, so I want everybody to feel comfortable with that. We're not taking any more speaker slips right now because we've called the item. When you come up to speak, frankly, you know, I'm just laying these ground rules, don't care about your party affiliation, and I don't think you need to give it unless you want to. That's not the purpose here. I am going to want to set a little bit of ground rules, because I think it moves a discussion forward in a very productive way. I suspect there's going to be people from both sides, or people with many different passionate thoughts or ideas. And so if you agree with that person speaking, I'm going to ask you to refrain from clapping, but perhaps just raise your hand. That sends that message to us just as clear as clapping, and it also enables the person who's speaking to finish what they're saying. I'm going to also ask for respect for everybody to speak. If somebody's speaking and you happen not to agree with them, we're not going to tolerate any heckling from, from, from the audience members there or from the, from the, those of you seated, seated out there. And that would be disrespectful, and we want to listen to all points of view. Along those lines too, again, no shouting from the audience. Just a little bit of ground rules, I just want to, I really want to have a productive discussion tonight, and I really want to take it in that direction. So if somebody insists on continuing to heckle or talk from the audience, I'm telling our sergeant-at-arms now just to politely remove them after the second time. And that's how we're going to play it, we'll probably take a quick recess if that happens. So that's my quick staff report. Madam City Clerk, how many speakers do we have?
Mr. Mayor, we have twenty-five speakers.
Twenty-five speakers, and we're at five minutes each, correct?
We are at five minutes each.
Five minutes each, okay, so. Everybody gets their five minutes. When your five-minute time is up, I'm going to politely remind you, and then we'll move to the next speaker. Some of you, if you agree with the speaker who came before you, you can just say, hey, I agreed with so-and-so speaker. You can take two minutes, five minutes, whatever you want. I suspect we'll stay here as long as we need to. Just a council reminder, by, by resolution, council needs to extend the meeting at ten PM by the vote of the council, so we'll just keep an eye on that. Madam City Clerk, let's have a great discussion. Call the first speaker.
Okay, the first speaker is Cindy Bustos, to be followed by Jenny Scharf.
Thank you. One, one other thing too, before Ms. Bustos speaks. I noticed there's some people with signs there. You are welcome to display those signs. But do me a favor, don't lift them so high that you block the people behind you. That would be pretty cool, okay? Thanks. Ms. Bustos, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Cindy Bustos, and my husband and I are longtime residents of Temecula. Been here a couple times. I'd like to start with reading what Mayor Nigar wrote on his public Facebook page in prefacing this resolution that you're proposing. Alert. Councilmember Ron and I have placed on the council agenda for Tuesday twenty-third a resolution denouncing socialism dash communism, upholding the elements of the Constitution and the oath of office, and reasserting that anyone who wishes to change our government without without proper constitutional amendment may be considered an enemy, either foreign or domestic, including elected officials. We will encourage all municipalities to adopt the resolution and make a statement for the cause of liberty. Will you come out and speak for liberty? Our young people need to know the foolishness that is being peddled, the value of liberty and what it costs. The resolution is below God bless America. Mayor Nigar, I, it's hard for me to believe that you just want to have a discussion, because I think this is a very divisive way to introduce your resolution. It almost seems that you are responding to national politics and not our own local issues. So I'm wondering, why is this resolution being brought up at this particular time? I understand that, Matt, Ron, you are challenging Duncan Hunter's seat, is that correct? You don't have to answer.
So we're, we can't?
Mm-hmm.
We'll be having public discussion and council comments after everyone's comments.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, fine. And I'm just, I hate to say it, but it almost seems you knew that this would get a reaction and also a lot of publicity. I'd also like to define who your enemies are. This seems to be political, blatant political grandstanding, and I think it's entirely inappropriate. I consider myself to be a patriot, I love my country, and I love this city and the people in it. If I don't agree with your politics, Mr. Mayor, does that make me an enemy? This is the politics of division, which only does harm to our nation and every one of us citizens. Please, I urge you not to vote for this resolution as it stands. I want to be, to continue to be so proud of my city and its leaders, and I want to thank you all.
Ms. Bustos, thank you for coming.
Yes, thank you.
The, the next speaker is Jenny Scharf, to be followed by Alan Suarez.
Hold on, hold on, Madam City Clerk. Again, you know, it's hard for me to tell you not to clap, because things are in your heart, you wanna clap, but if you, if you can refrain from it, use the hand raising, which I saw some of you doing, it'll move the process much more easier. Could you please call the next speaker?
The next speaker again is Jenny Scharf, to be followed by Alan Suarez.
Ms. Scharf, good after, or good evening to you.
Good evening, Councilmembers and Mayor Nigar. I have to start with a question. Why? Why are you doing this? What is the serious threat in this community that prompted this resolution? Where are the enemies of the state? Am I one because I'm speaking up, or everybody else here holding signs? Instead of addressing an actual local problem, Resolution Nineteen reads like partisan political talking points. It is clearly meant to drum up fear amongst the conservative base here in the Temecula Valley and to alienate those of us who think otherwise, as you can see by the response from this community. If, as Councilmember Ron stated in the press enterprise, this is an unsettled area of policy, then this city should not be taking a stance on this by inaccurately demonizing one political system while lionizing another, and should instead be fostering discussion instead of division amongst the citizens. No matter how people feel about the idea of socialism, the reality is that we do in fact value government-run institutions. Our most popular institutions are socialist, our schools, our police force, our firefighters, our library, and our military, the strongest and most capable in the world. These institutions are designed to uphold and defend the ideas laid bare in our Constitution, including that of free speech and thought, which this resolution erodes. For these reasons and more, I ask you to reject this resolution by voting no. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scharf.
The next speaker is Alan Suarez, to be followed by Jorge Bustos.
Mr. Suarez, I keep getting my mornings and evenings. Good evening to you.
Good evening. First, I'd like to thank all of you for being willing to have us discuss and even go past the ten o'clock time length. I'll start off by saying my name is Alan. I am relatively new to the City of Temecula. I've only been living here for about three years, and I remember the first week that I moved here, I took part in the Legal Scholars Program, which is one of the many amazing programs that the city does. And I remember being just so impressed and so amazed by what the city can do and what a city can do at all. I didn't know that a city can have programs like that, and I was very, very surprised and very impressed. Then I went on to be an intern for the city for about a year, and some of you might recognize me. I remember working with you a couple times. I worked in the Economic Development Department, and I, my main project there was the construction training program, which Stu, you're a big supporter of, and I remember you being there many nights with us, those long nights when we would be hammering on those sheds. And I just remember thinking, just, again, how amazing it is that we can have programs like this, and that this is what a city should be, doing work like this, educational opportunities, summits, programs like this, and I also remember looking around and seeing my team and all the other interns that were there. And it was such a diverse team, full of different skill sets, different cultures, different ideas. And one of my favorite moments within working in the City of Temecula was whenever we would have downtime, we'd have lunch, and we'd just all talk. We'd all talk in the Entrepreneurs Exchange, sit around a table, have some leftover pizza from some random program that's two days old, but we'll still have it. And the different conversations that we had and the different ideas that were thrown around, and we might not agree with them, but the dialogue that was there, and I would hate for anyone to feel that they be called an enemy because they have a different political view or political philosophy. And it just all happens that actually one of the interns there happened to identify themselves with the Communist Party, right? And I can only imagine how that person might feel, that our own city, that the work that this person put in is being downplayed and that they're being alienated because of some belief that they have, despite of all the hard work that they have done for the city. And so, it's for that reason, and for the reason that I, that I love Temecula, that I consider Temecula my home, even though I've lived here for only three years, which is that inclusiveness that I ask that you vote no or amend this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Jorge Bustos, to be followed by Liam Omara.
Jorge, are you here? Here he comes. Mr. Bustos, good evening to you.
Good evening. Sorry about my back. Thank you for letting us participate in the discussion. My name is Jorge Bustos, and I've been in Temecula since nineteen eighty-eight. We voted for the city, and we've always been very proud of the way the city council has worked with the city, and here we can see it, and I think it's a good idea that maybe instead of having these meetings about politics as a very short segment of the regular meetings, maybe it should be a separate thing, and we could use this facility, because these are prime times, and little time does not do service to what we have to say. And I have to say that the, unfortunately, when I read your invitation, the resolution you have posted to be voted tonight by the city, I was very surprised by the way you introduced this resolution. Because if you have a resolution to affirm or believe in the Constitution, I think you get a hundred percent agreement. The Constitution has been here for a long time, has been great, there's nothing better. But saying that, I just wanna read this part, because I thought that you were gonna vote tonight on it, so I might be a little concentrated for everything.
Okay.
And it says, "Our values are already stated in our Constitution, and what you proposition is only funding the fires of hatred for people don't like, that they don't think like you or Mr. Rand, according to what you posted in there." Have you decided which of you get to decide which one of us that we don't think like you is the enemy? And so what defines an enemy? Or the city, or Temecula, or the county, or the country, you know? Socialism and communism are system that were not mentioned in our Constitution. And I'm a citizen, and my duty is to vote for representatives who uphold the Constitution and my own individual rights. You stated in your Facebook page that our young people need to know the foolishness being peddled, and that's your quote. I agree. The last time our representatives labeled our citizens enemies, we had a civil war that divided families and communists in the country, and six hundred and twenty thousand people died, Americans died in that war. The civil war killed just as many as the six hundred and forty thousand Americans that have died in all the other wars since then. The young people need to know this. When Joseph McCarthy had the Red Scare, the boogeyman was communism, and many of our citizens were blacklisted, and they destroyed their professional lives along with their families and everything that goes with it. The young people need to know this. If we accept your premise that communism is our enemy, then we have to ask, why is our president allowed Russia to keep troops and planes in Venezuela, where Venezuela is a communist dictatorship and won't allow their people to change their government by popular vote? Communist Russia is one of our president's best friends. Russia and China both trade with North Korea, who has a dangerous dictator in charge. Both countries have nuclear weapons pointing in our direction. The young people need to know this. If our president had secret meetings with the president of Russia with his communist country and announced no notes to be taken, I repeat, our president meets with a communist leader and does not allow any of our citizens to know what was discussed. Young people need to know this. I hope you take the time to explain your finger pointing and dove whistles at us. I'm not the enemy. I am a citizen who votes and chooses to exercise my right. I have the right to face breach and the freedom to assemble. Please don't sign the resolution as is presented in here unless you retire the initial invitation naming people, different people, enemies of, I assume, our community. Thank you for listening.
Mr. Bustos, thank you. Very gentle and articulate.
The next speaker is Liam Omara, to be followed by Joseph Ragoo.
Mr. Omara, good evening to you, sir.
Hello. First off, thank you for giving the public the opportunity to discuss this resolution. So I'm Dr. Liam Omara, and I'm a professor of history, so I'm gonna try to stick close to my prepared notes, so I don't ramble off, and I hope that you'll forgive my passion for the issue. So, let's get right to it. Your resolution is sloppily argued, making an untenable case for economic models in the Constitution when no such discussion exists in the text. The Constitution we all love is concerned with governance, and governance alone. And so far as your socialist boogeyman goes, I would suggest a careful read of the Fifth Amendment and the attendant jurisprudence around it, as well as the common law principles of eminent domain, but none of that has anything to do with anything, really, because the socialism along the lines you appear to fear simply does not exist. This resolution is nothing but vapid gibberish, applicable to no extent trend in American politics. It is in fact meant as a partisan and divisive ploy, as red meat for a Republican base primed to fear the scary word socialism with all the Cold War, Red Scare nonsense behind it. And yet, there is no movement to pursue change to our system of governance along the lines you propose, none which evade the constitutional amendment process or the existing framework within the Constitution, and none to abolish private property or nationalize industry. I would therefore challenge you sincerely and directly to show us any contemporary American example of socialism or communism which fits the definition in your resolution. Have Bernie Sanders or Alexandria Ocasio-Cortez proposed the nationalization of industry or collective ownership of the means of production? No, they have not. They are both capitalists. Their use of the word socialism is an American neologism, and simply a way of arguing for social democracy. And that philosophy, social democracy, just buttresses society through an effective welfare state, and it exists everywhere in the developed world, including here. The democratic socialism in progressive rhetoric is not actual socialism, nor even the democratic socialism of Eugene Debs early in the last century. It is a recasting of the social democracy defended by liberal and conservative politicians alike around the world. And it is also a deeply mainstream idea in American political history. I mean, in your imagination, would be, would Franklin Roosevelt and Lyndon Johnson be communists for the New Deal and the Great Society programs? So, let's stick to some, you know, famous Republican politicians to kind of drive the point home. I'd like to point out that Abraham Lincoln argued forcefully that the interests of labor precede and supersede the interests of capital, and that the right of workers to organize, to advance their position must be defended. Theodore Roosevelt spoke to the interests of the working class over the interests of corporations, and in his campaign offered a square deal to the American people that included changing the rules to provide, quote, "a more substantial equality of opportunity", end quote. Much more recently, Richard Nixon proposed the introduction of a universal healthcare system with a government-run model at that, and actually proposed a universal basic income so that poverty could be eliminated. Somewhere along the way, some Republicans and conservatives forgot the meaning and promise of liberty for all, deciding instead that it meant unlimited rights to exploit and demean fellow citizens. Freedom for all requires that we act to equalize opportunity to succeed in this great country, and that means fighting poverty and injustice. It is simply dishonest to argue that those who seek equality of opportunity instead seek equality of outcome. We will not all use our freedom in the same ways, but we must have freedom. And a system which forces a person into bankruptcy and homelessness because of a hospital bill is not freedom at all. Thank you very much for your time.
Mr. Omara, thank you.
The, the next speaker. The next speaker is...
I, I asked for no heckling, okay? And if you can please keep the clapping down. I, I understand the passion, and that was a great history lesson, but no heckling from the audience. That, again, will have you removed politely to watch the meeting out in the hallway. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Joseph Ragoo. I'm sorry if I didn't pronounce your last name right, to be followed by Tammy Sims.
Joseph, good evening, sir.
Good evening. So, I'm a senior at Greddel, so just send that. Little youth in here. So I'm just gonna get right into it. The City of Temecula website states that the city council is a five-member, nonpartisan board elected by district from the citizens of Temecula. But what we are discussing here today is a partisan issue. There's no Republican or Democratic way to pave a road. The integration of political parties and ideologies into the Temecula City Council is needless, as they are relevant to providing the services that our council was elected to carry out. We have numerous issues within Temecula that need to be fixed before we go off on proposing pointless resolutions such as this one. Our roads need to be fixed, the traffic is getting worse, and homelessness is still a major issue within our city. We need a city council who can work together to improve our city, not one that divides it along ideological lines. We do not elect council members to represent only those who they deem fit. We elected them to represent the residents of Temecula, and this resolution does not do that at all. We don't need to return to the McCarthyism era of the forties and fifties where the practice of making accusations of subversion or treason without proper regard for evidence becomes commonplace within our city government. This comes down to being a very simple thing, an attempt at fear-mongering within our community, and that is an irresponsible thing for our council to aid in. The wording throughout this resolution is vague at best, with purposeful misleading points such as the definition of socialism, while true, is not indicative of what socialism really is within our country. Mr. Mayor and Councilman Ron's responses to the justified outrage, such as "our young people need to know the foolishness that is being peddled, the value of liberty and what it costs," as well as, quote, "Lol, you folks are too funny," end quote, are comments that belittle our residents and show the power complex that is being played within this resolution. In the wording alone of denouncing socialism slash communism, this resolution is a blatant attempt to tie two different ideologies into one way as a way of inciting fear and divide among our citizens. City of Temecula is not a political platform for our city council members to jumpstart their grander political aspirations from. If these two are so nearly intertwined, then are we going to denounce programs such as Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid, and the VA? All social programs currently in place. Many of the vets within our community depend on healthcare from a social program, and we know they don't need to be denounced or condemned for this. They deserve better than that, we deserve better than that. Mr. Mayor, your key objectives are listed as improving traffic flow, managing growth, advocating for the special needs community, among other things. None of what was just listed needs to be aligned with a political party or ideology, ideology. Councilman Ron, you say that, quote, "The city has and always will remain nonpartisan, as in the Constitution," end quote, but this resolution immediately contradicts that very statement. Introducing this resolution introduces our city council to have party affiliation, bias, and designation that only serves to divide Temecula's citizens. bias, and designation that only serves to divide Temecula's citizens. You represent all of us, not only those who agree with you. There's no need for this within our city as it is an unneeded barrier. We are a community in Temecula. We don't need to adopt a resolution that hinders that, as well as productivity and making this wonderful city even better. It'd be irresponsible of us to do so. I don't want to have a divided neighborhood, to turn against, to have my own neighbor turn against me. That is not what we, as Temecula residents, stand for. I don't want a product of a political party in my city council. I want somebody who is first and foremost representing Temecula and its residents. I don't want to, sorry, I don't want a partisan pawn. I want to see a neighbor sitting here in front of me. Thank you.
Joseph, thank you.
The next speaker is Tammy Sims, to be followed by Dan Zuckerman.
Ms. Sims, welcome tonight.
Good evening, city council members, and thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My concern and comments are mostly directed toward Mr. Nagar and Mr. Ron as they are the authors of Resolution Number 19. But if any other council members are considering passing this resolution, I hope I also have your attention. My name is Tammy Sims. I'm a former Navy nurse and have lived in the Temecula Valley for over 32 years. This is not the first time I have been in front of the city council, and from the looks of Resolution Number 19, it will not be my last. The poets may say that love is the great motivator, but politicians know it is fear that turns out the vote. What Resolution Number 19 does is create fear. I think the position of this resolution is to undermine those who hold different political beliefs, marginalizing and blatantly attempting to criminalize them labeling any dissenter as a domestic enemy. I am greatly dismayed that the City of Temecula City Council, which is, I assumed, was nonpartisan, has proposed a resolution denouncing socialism as a threat to the Constitution. Socialism is alive and well in America, and it has been here for a very long time. Socialism is taxpayer funds being used collectively to benefit society as a whole despite income, contribution, or ability. These are just a few examples of socialism. The United States military is the largest and most funded socialistic program in the world. Those roads and highways you drive on every single day are completely taxpayer-funded. Every situation where you have had to call the police or fire department, you have used a taxpayer-funded socialist program. This resolution has nothing to do with the Constitution or socialistic programs. It has to do with creating fear. I would hope that our city council would exercise caution in our current volatile political climate. Please don't fan the fires of fear and hatred. As a veteran, I am calling out shame to any members of the council who propose and support this resolution. There are more important civic responsibilities for you as elected leaders than bringing dissension and turmoil to this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sims.
The next speaker is...
I also have a neighbor's statement who's not able to be here. May I present that to the clerk?
Yes, you may. You still have two minutes.
Thank you.
Did you want to read it?
I, uh, it's not my first...
Okay. All right, very good.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dan Zuckerman, to be followed by Martha Howard.
Mr. Zuckerman.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members. By the way, that was very good. Thank you so much. I take issue with Resolution 19 that the Temecula City Council has put forth. You state in your resolution that all other economic and political schools of thought other than capitalism have emerged as a serious threat to our republic. This sentence alone shows that what you desire is one-party government with no dissent or opposition allowed. You continually reference the Constitution as if the Constitution endorsed capitalism to all other forms of socio or political thought. It does not. You are trying to create a monolithic frame, pardon me, framework for every citizen to live in in total disregard to the values of the same Constitution that you continually reference in your resolution. Your resolution references that any attempts to establish a subservience to a federal government that purports to act in the best interests of all directly conflicts with the existing Constitution. But the preamble of the Constitution states that "we, the people, in order to form a more perfect union, establish justice, ensure domestic tranquility, provide for the common defense, promote the general welfare, and secure the blessings of liberty to ourselves and our posterity, establish this Constitution." That is certainly acting in the welfare of all, to the best interests of all. The Constitution is a blueprint for government. That is all. It set the United States of America up as a constitutional republic. It never once stipulated an economic framework that the country would be under. You also state that you believe that the federal government doesn't follow, pardon me, you also state that you believe that a federal government that doesn't follow capitalism will overcome our elected officials and diminish the importance of a full republic. That is happening right now, right now, under our current president. When this administration says that it will withhold federal funds designated for certain states and cities because it does not like their politics, that is a federal government that is diminishing the importance of the republic. That is a federal government that is overriding states' rights. You reference that the Great Recession seemingly tore a hole in the fabric of the national economy and the American people's belief in capitalism. You then say that the recovery occurred because of this framework capitalism and not in spite of it. The recovery happened because of the programs enacted by Presidents Bush and Obama. Both presidents helped bail out banks to the tune of billions of dollars, taxpayers to the tunes of billions of dollars, and then more billions of dollars to bail out the auto industry. That is not capitalism. That is socialism. President Trump is currently giving billions of dollars to American farmers whose livelihood has been harmed by tariffs enacted by him. That is socialism. That's picking winners and losers. Section 8, Article 7 of the Constitution empowers Congress to establish post offices and post roads. That is done for the benefit of all people in the United States. Socialism. The nation's modern highway system was begun in 1806 by President Jefferson's authorization of the Cumberland National Post Road. Transportation was deemed to be one of the nation's essential services that could not be relegated to private enterprise. Socialism. Neither capitalism, socialism, or any other ism has been referenced in the Constitution, and neither was religion, all for the same reason, because it was not the founders' intent to regulate what its citizens believed politically, economically, or religiously. I can only assert that you are targeting socialism because democratic socialism is now gaining adherence in our country, that the frontrunner for the Democratic nomination for the presidency is a registered democratic socialist, that you are using the Constitution to try to establish the dominance of one political party over another. You claim in your resolution that the Constitution exists to prevent concentrated power and tyranny, but that's exactly what you are trying to do in claiming that one system of economic and political thought, capitalism, is the only path to follow. Actually, it should be liberalism, but you put capitalism in your resolution. You are doing the one thing you claim this resolution is against, concentrating power and tyrannizing those that don't agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zuckerman. Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Martha Howard, to be followed by Jim Mitchell.
Ms. Howard, welcome to have you, and thank you, everybody, for the show of hands that really moved things along, and trust me, we receive it here. Ms. Howard, it's all yours.
Hang on, Mike. Sorry, before we go on, we're close to 10 o'clock, and we need to vote on extending the meeting.
Motion to extend.
To 10:30?
To 10:30.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're good till 10:30. Ms. Howard?
Thank you. My back will be good, too. Good evening, council members and supporting staff. My name is Martha Howard. I'm a Temecula resident and founder of the Temecula Latin Association. It's understated to say that tonight I must remind you, all of you, the five of you, that your position is a nonpartisan one. And Mayor Nagar, you are taking a position on this issue very strongly, not only tonight, but many times before. That's the reason why we're here. That's the reason that we have in this dialogue. Saying that, I think that we need to concentrate on the issues that are in our community. You all know that I run for city council because there are pressing issues that need to be addressed, such as alleviate the traffic, affordable housing, and sustainable jobs. There are no sustainable jobs here. The wineries are not going to sustain us. Those are tourism that are supported by the immigrants that come and work. And, you know, last election, we had the anti-immigrant law here, and it was passed. And it was during that time where we had elections. Now, we are in that cycle again, and you bring in this division in our community, and I'm very surprised about you, Councilman Ron. You're a scholar. You should have some advice. You know that this is wrong, that this will continue to create division in our community, and we will not stand for it. We will not stand for it. And I do say this with all due respect. Saying that, I request that this item will be withdrawn. Has no place in our city, has no place in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Howard.
The next speaker is Jim Mitchell, to be followed by Merrill Mitchell.
Are you not wanting to speak, Jim? Jim, are you not wanting to speak? You got it, and it's good to see you, and we appreciate all the debates you used to hold at Temecu over the years. Thank you. Ms. Mitchell, welcome.
Good evening, council. My name is Merrill Mitchell, and as you know, I'm a resident of Temecula for many years. I'm here tonight because I find in reading Resolution Number 19, it's very disturbing that the city would propose to adopt a resolution so that blatantly mischaracterizes the content of the Constitution. As people have said before me, the Constitution is a political document creating a system of government. There is nothing in the Constitution whatsoever about what form of economic system the government of the United States should adopt. Thus, by stating in Resolution 19 that capitalism is inherent in the Constitution is an absolutely false and misleading statement, and to conclude that socialism inherently contradicts or conflicts with the principles outlined in the Constitution is another example of the mischaracterizations found in the proposed Resolution 19. There are many problems with this proposed resolution, but I think the most egregious and the most unconstitutional is the thinly masked attempt to quash both political and economic ideology of any kind that may differ from the conclusions found in the proposed resolution. Not only does paragraph 10 attempt to quash differing political and economic ideology, it proposes to label any political or economic ideology different from that proposed in Resolution Number 19 as a serious threat to our republic. I believe both these proposals contradict the freedoms that we find in the First Amendment of our Constitution. In conclusion, in adopting this resolution in its present form, I believe significantly could diminish the stature of this city council in the community. Furthermore, I believe that the adoption of this resolution could lead to protracted litigation in federal courts and most probably would be overturned as it is vague, ambiguous, and unconstitutional. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Ms. Mitchell.
The next speaker is Dana Connolly.
Onto clapping, nice hands. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Dana Connolly, to be followed by Gwendolyn Ulrich.
Ms. Connolly, good evening to you.
Hello. Dear Mayor and city council members, my husband and I have lived in Temecula since 1988. We raised our daughter here and love it as much today as we did 31 years ago. I was born to parents whose own parents were immigrants to our country. My parents raised me not to judge others by their skin color, religion, or background. They always taught me that we are stewards of the underdogs, the poor, the disabled, the animals. When I was older, I found myself living as a single parent in government-subsidized housing. Thanks to that stepping stone, I was able to save money and eventually purchase my own low-cost housing unit. Throughout my life, I followed my parents' philosophy of caring for others and went on to be a volunteer with Meals on Wheels, Special Olympics, and started Habitat for Humanity in our valley here. While I worked full-time, I went to school at night, finishing my bachelor's in social science, master's in education, earned my teaching credential and certification to instruct English language learners. I taught special education, grade second through 11th, in Temecula here for 21 years. I recognize you. I am now retired and continue to rescue animals, tutor students from Korea, and volunteer as a case manager for helping the homeless and low-income families in our community. Although Temecula has always been conservative in nature, I am very concerned with the wording of potential adoption of Resolution 19. It greatly troubles me that this resolution includes verbiage such as "whereas" all other economic and political schools of thought, including socialism and communism, have emerged as a serious threat to our republic. I am afraid that my passion for helping others is being seen as socialism, communism, and very strangely, unpatriotic. In fact, as I stood peacefully holding up a sign with others at the duck pond a few weeks ago, angry Trump supporters shouted at us to "go home, you're not welcome here, we're a Christian community, and you are zombie communists." And I did report that to the police. It's interesting because I am a Christian, and I follow what my parents and Jesus taught: to love one another, to care for the less fortunate, to open my arms and share my blessings with others, and to not judge anyone for any reason. To confuse my giving nature with socialism or communism is a stab in my heart. But I will not stop standing up for those in need nor will I allow my city to be one of exclusion, anger, unfounded fears, division, and negativity. Therefore, I ask you not to adopt Resolution 19. Neither the Constitution nor the Bible speak to such judgment and division. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly.
The next speaker...
Yeah, next speaker.
The next speaker is Gwendolyn Ulrich, to be followed by Ernie Hoth.
Ms. Ulrich, good evening to you.
Good evening. I'm Professor Gwendolyn Ulrich Schlumberger.
Could you pull that microphone a little closer? There you go.
I'm not used to using a mic. I yell at my students. I've lived in Temecula for heavens, close to 20 years. Were business owners, my husband and I, members of the Chamber of Commerce. And this is the first time I've actually come and rolled off my butt to get into one of these meetings because I've thought you guys have done a pretty good job up until now. But I am deeply disturbed by this. As you've already had most of the history lessons, but one of the things that I specialize in is othering, and this is very othering. And I work with veterans, I work with disabled students, I work with single parents, I work with Muslim students. I see what happens on our college campuses every single day. I hear it every day. I see the divisions that are happening right now, and it is definitely troubling. For the last 13 years, I have been teaching in the community colleges, and we're bringing a community college to Temecula. And I'm seeing what's happening in the community college system, and language like this is exactly what has happened historically. It is what we have seen happen over and over and over again, and I can give you 50 examples, I can give you 150 examples, but you guys don't need a history lesson like this. But what has always struck me is we've, as a Girl Scout troop leader here in Temecula, as working with many, Temecula Valley Inline Hockey Association, and all of these different things that I've done in my community to give back, one of the things we've always talked about is how Temecula has heart. But to be perfectly honest, this doesn't have heart. But to be perfectly honest, this doesn't have heart. This says, "If you think like me, you're part of us. If you look like me, if you love like me, if you..." all of this, then you're part of us. But otherwise, you're them. And we can treat them any way you want. This will prevent people from putting posters on their lawn who they want to support as we go into an election cycle. People will be prevented from doing that, because they'll be the enemy. Because our mayor said so. Words matter. There is nothing I have learned more closely in my 13 years of teaching is that words, the words I choose, matter. That I have to explain what I mean, and I have to be clear. But the words I choose matter. Using the terminology like "serious threat" is detrimental to our city, to our town, to this community that I love, that I have been a part of, that I have raised my children in, that I have worked in our business in, that I'm a member, and I've done all of these things and I've given back to. And it frightens me. It frightens me, because it will make the rhetoric become worse. Matt, you came to my temple. You came to my synagogue. You stood there. You prayed with us. But you put together legislation, or put together this resolution, that causes division, that will give power, and used words that will give power to this, to this hate and this fear-mongering that is going on. I expected better of you. And I am very disappointed. You prayed with me in my synagogue. And I was so happy to have you there.
Ms. Ulrich, your time is just about up. You have five seconds.
But this is... This is something that I am passionate about. I protect my students. They're like my own children. But this will make it much worse.
Thank you for speaking tonight.
The next speaker is Ernie Hoth, to be followed by Lynda McDonald.
Ernie? Ernie, are you there? Mr. Hoth? Next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Lynda McDonald, to be followed by Louis Reyes.
Ms. McDonald, welcome. Are you still writing the article on gardening in the Valley News?
Pardon?
Are you still writing your articles?
No, no, no.
No, we all enjoyed that.
Thank you.
You bet.
I do landscape design.
You can pull that microphone up if you want.
32-year resident Temecula. Tammy, you have something in common? One of the few. I'm just basically going to read the letter that I sent in to everybody. I don't think I sent one to Mike. You can hear me now. "I was appalled when I was given a copy of the proposed Resolution 19 yesterday. It's unacceptable on so many levels. Our city council must have better things to do than to further divide this community. You were not put in office because you're a conservative. You also represent Democrats, and I'm a Democratic Socialist and proud of it. Planning on kicking me out of Temecula? What exactly is your plan, then? You people are dragging us back decades with the outrageous things you're saying and doing. Unacceptable, because it's all based on two things: fear and ignorance. You are, in fact, encouraging the very thing you profess to be trying to stop: our freedoms in this country, which is what our Constitution is actually about, not the..." I see in your Resolution 19. "Are we heading back to the days of McCarthyism now? I suggest you notice the fact that President Trump is the one trying to dismantle our Constitution, not anybody else. He's spreading his propaganda on Fox News, and any other media is merely dismissed as fake news. He's attempting on numerous occasions to shut down the freedom of the press and many other rights written into our Constitution. We, the people, would decide what type of government we want. That's not your call to make. We want our constitutional rights, and we demand a democracy that allows us to continue to have that choice. How about focusing on our roads here in Temecula? They're falling apart now, cracks, potholes. This is after we were forced to pay much higher taxes now on everything. We're getting less for our money. Unacceptable to me. I highly suggest you shelve this resolution. Better yet, throw it in the trash. It's pointless and only creates animosity and division, which I'm pretty sure we do not need in this community. Again, you are supposed to represent all of the people in this community, not just the right wing. Please try to educate yourselves and the citizens here instead of fear-mongering as Trump does. We would so appreciate it." Thank you.
The next speaker is Louis Reyes, to be followed by Arthur Amor.
Mr. Reyes, good evening to you, sir.
How you doing, sir?
I am doing just peachy.
I'm excellent.
All right. Honorable mayor, council, I have heard... I mean, I'm chuckling over there behind me. This is ridiculous, okay? Each one of you took an oath to the Constitution like I did, and I expect you to uphold that Constitution. It doesn't run out. It's forever. I was told as a young man, there ain't no free hot dogs in this world. You got to go out there and get it. I'm a capitalist and proud of it. And I hope you're not getting intimidated this evening, because I think this was a stacked deck tonight. I wasn't even aware of this till yesterday, so I'm really not that prepared. But I can tell you, the enemy is at the gate, contrary to what you heard earlier. The enemy is at the gate, and if we don't stop them now, we will lose America. Bottom line. It's not only a federal government issue, it's a state government issue, and it's a city municipality issue. Now, it's up to you. You have the decision-making power on this particular resolution. I support this resolution, and I support it wholeheartedly.
Stop the clock for a second.
Ms. Hook, yes, sir.
Stop the clock for a second. I ask that everybody be respectful, and I would insist that you do that. And I'm going to enforce it both ways. Please. Start the clock again. I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes, you got interrupted. Roll it back a little bit if you can, Ms. City Clerk.
Ready?
You're... Go ahead.
And contrary to what we're hearing this evening, I can honestly tell you, I've been around long enough to where I know what's behind me, and I know exactly what took place this evening. Please do not get intimidated. This is ridiculous. This is almost comical, okay? It's a circus tonight. So what I want to tell you tonight, there's a confusion about socialism and capitalism. The enemy at the gate right now is socialism slash communism. Don't let them fool you. I am not a moocher, and I despise moochers. I will help people that need help. I will give people that truly need something. But we have a lot of outsiders, a lot of infiltrators in this area. And I can honestly tell you that the next time you have this dialogue, it's not going to be this way, because I will wake people up, and I have individuals that will wake people up. Do not get intimidated. The Constitution is at war. You took that oath to the Constitution. It doesn't change. It's at war, and it's being attacked by socialist and communist. And I would be very embarrassed to say here in America that I'm a communist or a socialist. If they don't like America, they can get out. That's the way I look at it. America is for everyone, and we have order here in America. Ms. Edwards, don't be laughing at me, please. That's very, very rude of you. Because next time, it won't be this way, ma'am.
Let him finish his comment, then you can comment. Go ahead, sir.
Yes, sir. So I just want to encourage... I want to encourage you folks to adopt this resolution. Take it from a country boy. I can tell you right now, there ain't no free hot dogs, and don't be giving them out, because you won't last long. I am totally against giving away America, giving away freebies. We want the moochers out. You want to live here, you want to have a good life, you'll work for it. Nobody's going to give it to you. You'll work for it. Thank you very much, and I support the resolution.
Stay right there for a second. Thank you for speaking. Ms. Edwards, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I apologize. I'm not laughing at you. I'm laughing at the "um hello" sign. That's what I was laughing at.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know what, ma'am? That's your number-one warning. Sergeant-at-arms, if the lady speaks out again from the audience, please politely and gently remove her. Thank you.
I appreciate you listening to me this evening. We will overcome, and we will win.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Arthur Amor, to be followed by William Frisbee.
Mr... Was that Mr. Amor?
Yes.
Show us some love, sir.
Okay, I'll try.
All right.
I want to thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. This has been a very eye-opening experience for me. It's my first-ever city council meeting, and the amount of thought and care you guys give to the mere positioning of a stop sign, I mean, the lady with the trees and the guy with the PowerPoint. Now I see how Temecula's gotten so beautiful over the years, and it's thanks to your hard work. But I'm telling you, you totally blew it on this resolution. The old adage is true: history repeats itself. It looks like the days of Joseph McCarthy have returned, like some of my friends have noted. McCarthyism, that dark period when Americans were persecuted for their political beliefs simply because their views were not shared by the folks in charge. And leading that effort was the Senator... Where's he from, Minnesota? Joseph McCarthy? Sorry. Lost my place. Ah! As a result of his dubious efforts, a lot of good people lost their careers, their livelihoods. In some cases, they committed suicide. But in the end, history has not looked kindly on Mr. McCarthy. He was eventually discredited. His actions were recognized precisely for what they were: petty, divisive, wholly un-American, and based in ignorance. And that's exactly where this resolution will wind up, if God forbid it's ever to pass. Our Constitution guarantees life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. In other words, freedom. Freedom of thought. This effort seeks to undermine that sacred right, and to that end, it defiles the very document it purports to uphold. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amor. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is William Frisbee, to be followed by Julie Powell.
Mr. Frisbee, I see you in the audience just chomping on the bit. You've got something to say.
Yes, I do.
Yes, welcome.
Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Bill Frisbee. I am retired, a resident, and a voter here in Temecula. My comments refer to the resolution. I'm not going to... You know the resolution I'm talking about. This resolution serves no legislative purpose at all. All public officials already swear an oath to uphold the U.S. Constitution, so I have to question why you are considering such a resolution. I'm old enough to remember the McCarthy era, in which anyone could have their lives and reputation ruined by being branded a communist. People were required to sign loyalty oaths, and were encouraged to label associates as communists. This current resolution looks, sounds, and smells a lot like those loyalty oaths. In my experience, whenever a public figure drapes him or herself in the flag in this manner, he is either a scoundrel or doing the work knowingly or not of one. The whole purpose of this resolution seems to me to be an exercise in bullying council members into taking a hard-line position against any citizens, candidates, or policies that could be labeled socialist. The language of the resolution makes this intent clear, raising, as it does the specter of the overthrow of our constitutional government. Most likely, the opposed policies include measures to reform the way health care is paid for, and tax and other economic policies. As a retiree, I depend on Social Security and Medicare to avoid financial ruin. Both policies were loudly criticized as socialist when they were proposed, mostly by the moneyed classes and politicians who were beholden to them. Sound familiar? Fortunately for me and most older people, conditions in this country had become so dire that these measures passed and are now supported by the vast majority of citizens. In my own case, on my 65th birthday, I fainted due to a condition requiring the installation of a cardiac pacemaker, which keeps me alive today. Without Medicare, I might have had to delay this operation, as the expense would have been ruinous. Many people nowadays are in the lamentable condition of having to choose between food and needed medicine. The United States is practically the only developed country in the world where a person can go bankrupt due to a medical emergency. If preventing that condition requires a socialist solution, I think that is an acceptable course of action. Please vote down this deplorable bit of political posturing and get on with the business you were elected to do. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, we might need another motion. We're getting near the 10:30.
Okay. How many more speakers do we have?
Mr. Mayor, we probably have at least 30 to 40 minutes' worth of speakers still.
Okay, so why don't we take this up to... What is this, 10:45? Is that all right?
Move the extension to 10:45. I don't know if...
That...
It's going to be longer than that.
11:30 maybe.
11.
Let's go with 11:30.
Move the extension to 11:30.
Okay, let's extend it to 11:30.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, let's do it. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Julie Powell, to be followed by Kathleen Hamilton.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. My name is Julie Polly, and I'm a resident of French Valley, Temecula-adjacent, and my kids go to Temecula schools. And I wanted to share with you what brought me down here tonight. I'm a small-business owner, and one of my clients is a property owner... Excuse me, a property owner trade association. So I spent a good deal of time in chambers such as this, in our region, advocating for their private property rights, their constitutionally protected private property rights. So when my hometown council has a resolution touting our commitment to the Constitution, I had to come down and voice my support for it. And it sounds like cooler heads have prevailed, and perhaps we can get less loaded language to make it more palatable for the community. So I think if you probably stuck to the Constitution and our civil liberties, there'd be a lot more agreement. I lost my train of thought. I usually have.
Take your time.
But I just wanted to come down and voice that, because I've seen far too many local governments just trample on private property rights. And so it's really refreshing to have this voice in this chambers tonight. So thank you very much.
Absolutely. And that is the purpose. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Kathleen Hamilton, to be followed by Mark Margolin.
No stranger to us, Ms. Hamilton. Good to see you.
Thank you. My name is Kathleen Hamilton, and I would just like to say that this council has done many wonderful things, things to be proud of. But unfortunately, this resolution is not one of them. You are better than this. It reeks of fear-mongering, and I say, "Let's trash it."
Thank you, Kathleen.
The next speaker is Mark Margolin, to be followed by Bob Cowell.
Mr. Margolin, good to see you, sir. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the city council. My name is Mark Margolin, and I'm a longtime resident and business owner in Temecula. And I stand before you extremely troubled. I'm troubled that this resolution purporting to reaffirm the principles of the Constitution includes just one quote attributed to that document, and the attribution is incorrect. Those words do not appear in the Constitution you seek to venerate. I'm troubled that in our nation today, it's become acceptable to mischaracterize the beliefs of political opponents. I'm doubly troubled that this council is seeking to jump on that bandwagon. I stand before you extremely troubled. Over more than 22 years, I've occasionally approached this microphone. A few times, I've addressed you on issues of substance. Most often, it was to share information about the kinds of programs and opportunities that make Temecula such an attractive place to live and work, progressive programs about which this council likes to brag. Progressive programs about which this council likes to brag. I've sat in these chambers and I've sat in my living room watching your deliberations. Sometimes I've agreed, sometimes I've disagreed. But I've never been so troubled by what seems to be motivating you to action. I know that facts are out of fashion in certain circles these days. But this council, by and large, has resisted the ill winds of ignorance and deception. So a few facts. None of the candidates of a mainstream party today is advocating the sort of socialism described in your Merriam-Webster-informed resolution. Not one. Many of the ideas being promoted by even the most progressive members of Congress and presidential candidates would have received bipartisan support in the United States of my youth. So I'm troubled. I'm troubled that you're talking about this tonight and not about how to repair the roads in our community that are in abysmal condition after the winter's deluge. Or how to prevent similar damage in coming years when, given the reality of climate change, we're likely to see more and bigger storms. I'm troubled that you're talking about this tonight and not seeking a prompt solution to the parking crisis in Old Town. Or how to grant more equitable access for performing arts organizations to the city's theater. I'm troubled that while your agenda tonight includes bureaucratic lip service to issues related to housing, you're debating this irrelevant resolution instead of taking concrete action to make living in our community more affordable for those who work here. I'm troubled that you're playing politics instead of inviting representatives of our water district to discuss the recent spate of water main breaks. I'm troubled that your resolution supposedly reaffirming constitutional ideals says nothing about those who exalt nation and race above the individual, nor about those who espouse a centralized democratic government headed by a dictatorial leader, severe economic and social regimentation, and forcible suppression of opposition. Those are the real threats to our Constitution today and I'm troubled that your resolution ignores them. By the way, Merriam-Webster has a name for that movement too. I suggest you look it up. I'm troubled that a member of this council in active pursuit of higher office has brought before you a pandering, grandstanding resolution devoid of substance or relevance to the issues in this council's purview. I stand before you extremely troubled that you're wasting the people's time and money on this nakedly political garbage.
Thank you, Mr. Margolin. Next speaker, please.
The next speaker is Bob Cowell to be followed by Ira Robinson.
Mr. Cowell, welcome.
Hello up there. Yeah, I saw a bunch of signs back here that said freak for one of the speakers that's gonna be on my side. And, uh, Mike, I support you and I support, uh, Matt on, on your initiative up there. The, I think it's actually item 23, not item 19. Yeah, I, you know, uh, they talk about cities not getting involved. How about all the sanctuary cities that have done all the sanctuary work? Uh, uh, they, they, they're involved in politics. That is not constitutional. That is unconstitutional. They have been the ones that have done that. I have lis- uh, I, I, when I listen to these people, I go, I'm listening to CNN, MSNBC. I'm listening to all the main media people out, that I, I've see, that, that, you know, I turn off the TV. I can't stand it because, you know, they don't fit my narrative, but they don't fit reality either. When you look at what's, what they say, these guys got really, I, I didn't even know that they got this involved. I, they must have sat down for days writing this stuff and I just thought, well, it'll be a no-brainer. I'll just come in here and, and, uh, who could possibly be against this, this thing? You know, I mean, it, it's, okay, it's gotta be Democrats. Because, you know, and, and the one thing that I've seen on, on a national level is they call about McCarthyism. I'll tell you about McCarthyism is that, um, there and reverse McCarthyism. They're after Trump and Trump I support. And that's, and I'm called names all the time. They said that they were, oh, somebody called him a name somewhere. I've had bottles thrown at me because I have a Trump sign up. I've had things thrown at me. Uh, I have people pointing, you know, their fingers to shoot me. Things like that when I get out on the street and it's not fun. So that's why you don't see people with Trump hats on. You don't see people with Trump shirts on because they are afraid. They're afraid of people like this that I have in back of me. So we're at war. It's, it's a Cold War. We're at war with this ideologies and, and they're on the other side and they are the enemy to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cowell.
The next speaker is Ira Robinson to be followed by Carl Ross.
Ira.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council. The, everybody who has spoken has pretty much said what I had planned to say. I had put 10 minutes of speech into five minutes of space and I don't need to deliver any of it. Except to say that I do agree, oh, by the way, I, one of the other things I would like to say is that I watch Fox in One America just for the, for the purpose of being able to see what the other side says. And I kind of turn mine off the same way the gentleman turns off his MSNBC and, uh, the networks. I think we all need to learn how to talk to each other, listen to each other, and pay some attention to what's going on in the world. When I read this proposal of, of yours and Councilman Ron's, I thought, I need to look at my Constitution to see if I can find a basis for the things that you were suggesting. Last night, I read this thing from page to page. There's not a word in here that supports anything in your proposed amendment. Nothing. There's no reference of, to, uh, socia- socialism. There's no reference to communism. There's no reference to capitalism. There's not even a reference to democracy in all of these words. None of them appear there. So focus, if you will, on what it is that the Constitution is really about and take some of those books that you gave these kids and go home and read the thing. Somebody needs to read this book. The only other thing I'd like to point out is that one thing that was missed so far, except one speaker did point out that the Declaration of Independence words about, um, the alien ability of life, liberty, property, all that sort of thing, did not appear in both documents. It only appeared in the Declaration of Independence. The Declaration of Independence is not law. The Declaration of Independence was not attached to or adopted in connection with the Constitution. It was a standalone where the colonists were listing for their citizens the reason for their 28 grievances against the king and their determination not to let it continue to happen. The only thing that was different about it was Thomas Jefferson did make the all-mannered, created equal statement, but everything else was just pure statements of problems with the king. It's not the law. It's never been the law. Please don't recite it, cite it that way. Thank you very much. Oh, by the way, one other thing. I'm not suggesting that you vote against this resolution. I suggest you get this resolution off the table and forget about it. Thanks.
The next, the next speaker is Carl Ross to be followed by our final speaker, Erin Lilly.
Mr. Ross, always a pleasure, sir. Hello. Well, I got up this morning and I picked up my Press, Press Enterprise, which I still get, my wife actually wants it for the Ross words. It's still a, a hard copy. And I read the front page and, uh, I turned around and said to Doty, my wife, I said, "Hallelujah, somebody's finally standing up to, uh, our great state of California, which claims, according to our governor, to be the opposition to the federal government." So this is the opposition to our state and I'm very proud that you, Mayor Nagar, and, um, Councilman Ron, put this together. I think it's a great idea. I can't see anything wrong with committing to the Constitution. I mean, uh, that's, uh, rather basic in my way of thinking. However, I must, I must say that I'm disappointed that you're not taking a vote. Uh, I'd like to see it voted on tonight. Uh, I don't see any reason why it shouldn't be. There's not much in it that I can see that, uh, in our Constitution that is, uh, requiring political whims to be determined before we can decide how to vote on it. I'm glad you put in the definition of, uh, with Merriam-Webster's definition of socialism. Uh, because, uh, in reading that, it's a little bit scary, for me at least. Uh, I would hope that it's scary to most people who are, uh, citizens of this country. But, uh, you know, everybody thinks, well, that's just a definition and it's nothing really going on with socialism. Well, there are 20 presidential candidates now that are falling over each other trying to out-socialize each other. And the practical applications of some of this is that, uh, some of the things that they're proposing is to eliminate, uh, private and employer healthcare insurance. They want, uh, the vote, uh, uh, felons to be allowed to vote from prison. Felons that aren't in prison to have the right to vote. They wanna stack the Supreme Court. They wanna lower, they wanna lower the voting age.
Please stop. Go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Ross.
Wanna lower the voting age? They wanna eliminate ICE, which has protected this country for, uh, for, since 9/11 fairly effectively. They wait, wanna tear down existing border walls. This is the practical application of socialism. Committing to the Constitution, uh, is something that I think is fundamental. And, uh, even though you have put together a very, a fairly concrete, comprehensive document, I don't see anything that need, that needs to be, uh, debated or checked to see how everybody feels about it. I'm very proud of Councilman Ron, very proud and always have been of Mike Nagar. I think he's a great mayor and a great councilman. I thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Ross. Always a pleasure to see you. Next speaker, please.
The final speaker is Erin Lilly.
Mr. Lilly, good evening to you.
Mr. Nagar, Mayor Nagar, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight. And you and Councilmember Ron, Ron seem like rational, reasonable people that genuinely try to do the right thing. And I noticed that neither of you spoke up on the dangers of communism when you approved the resolution on Interstate 15, extending the contract to continue work on that, which is a federal program. And I noticed none of you spoke up in opposition to the socialist nature of the, um, NDBG program that was discussed earlier that's providing great services to our community. And so I'm left to either conclude that you have not read the Constitution or you've not read the amendment or the resolution. And I could forgive you for the latter, aside from the fact that this is, um, a night when we're supposed to be teaching our children about the civic duty and civic obligations. And certainly, reading a resolution before proposing it would be incumbent on you. But I could see where the title of the resolution seems like motherhood and apple pie and who could be opposed to supporting the Constitution. And in fact, I think that's the one thing that all of us, all of the speakers tonight have in common, is we want you to support and uphold the Constitution. Where we differ, and in fact, I think with a few minor changes, the amendment would, the resolution would be fine. First of all, you state, "Whereas any attempts to establish subservience to a federal government that purports to, um, act in the best interest of all," that is exactly, exactly what the Constitution did. That is what the Constitutional Convention was all about. Establishing subservience to the federal government. So to suggest that the Constitution is in opposition to that is incredulous. And if you don't wanna read the Constitution, you can watch the Hamilton musical. And the second thing is on the, Merriam-Webster's definition of socialism is actually incorrect. And there's two key words that are different. And if you change those two words, the fear goes away and the resolution makes much more sense. Those two words are, "the political theory advocating collective ownership or government ownership or regulation and control of the means of production." Regulation or regulation is the key. And since the outset, since our Constitution was created, we have acknowledged that there's a role for the federal government to regulate private enterprise. And you mentioned the New Deal. You mentioned, um, the Great Depression and coming out of that. And what actually brought us out of that was an expansion of the Commerce Clause to allow for federal programs like Interstate 15. Allow for the federal government to assist cities and communities in economic development in times of need. And we take advantage of those programs today. You took advantage of them tonight. And I think if you change that word to "or," so, or regulation, that's a much more, that's actually the accurate Merriam-Webster definition of socialism. And it's a much more tenable position to understand. But then I think if you reread that, you might question whether you're actually in opposition to that. Are you actually telling us, Councilman Ron, that you're opposed to Interstate 15? That you don't wanna see that off-ramp completed? That you're opposed to the federal grant programs that are helping provide affordable housing? Provide after-school programs for our children? Support the Boys and Girls Club? Are you opposed to that? I think that it's important to actually read the definitions, actually understand what you're putting in front of the council and to be respectful to everyone and to be, especially to be respectful to the children, that you're talking about educating on civic responsibility and learning about civic, living about government, that you've invited them into your council chambers. And for them to see that, you know, I hope that you guys can course correct and fix this and come back with something that actually reflects a commitment to uphold the values of the Constitution and show our, show our children that you can do the right thing. Show them that this isn't a partisan issue, that you were not trying to do partisan grandstanding, that you genuinely had the interest of the Constitution and the community at heart. And do some soul searching. If that's really what was behind this, if that was really your intention, Councilman Ron, then please come back. Please state your, reaffirm your commitment to the Constitution. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lilly. And thank you, everybody, uh, who really, really participated in the discussion. I, we listened attentively. A couple of cleanup items and then we're gonna go to council discussion. I purchased on my, on my own dime, a couple of boxes of pocket constitutions. That's because it benefits everybody and that's just something that you can have if you wanna take one. You can see the city clerk on your way out and, uh, God bless you because we're talking about the U.S. Constitution and everybody should have one. So, um, we're gonna go ahead and move to council discussion. Who would like to kick this off? Go for it.
Okay, well, that was, uh, that was an interesting meeting. Let me, let me start by, by first saying how proud I think I am of, of everybody who's spoken here tonight because, you know, as, as a community, I think we've always tried to maintain civility and, and respect for one another and I, uh, deeply appreciate everyone coming forward and speaking their heart on this issue. Uh, you've demonstrated all significant candor and, and, and a love for your community and certainly pragmatism in, in your comments, so I appreciate that deeply. I am a little bit disappointed, though. And, uh, I'd, I'd say I'm mostly disappointed because there was a, a rush to judgment and a, a rush to condemn without, uh, hearing from either myself or any of our colleagues. And, uh, and I would say that because, uh, there's a particular way this process works. And before we reached this item tonight, uh, I think you saw a, a perfect example of this. So let me start by saying that, uh, because of the way the Brown Act works, you know, uh, any one of us as a council member, and those of you who already know this, I apologize, but any of us, any one of us as a council member can only speak to one other person on an item. Uh, and the moment we stray outside that, it is a violation of our, our state laws on, on public disclosure. And so, uh, in, in crafting this resolution, Mayor Nagar, uh, reached out to one council member and that council member was me. Um, and I was, I was happy to provide some information and to provide, uh, my insights. And I do have a very deep interest in our Constitution and really enjoyed, uh, the dialogue I had while I was in law school and, and even with professors in constitutional law. Very deeply appreciated that. And so the language that I, uh, attempted to provide, uh, were, was there to help provide some, some clarity and balance. Um, and that language, uh, you know, some, some items were included, some items weren't. Uh, but, you know, I think the interest in this resolution is the same as everyone else in this room, regardless of, of, uh, you know, political affiliation. My interest in this resolution was and is on reaffirming our commitment to the Constitution of the United States. I think that's something, hopefully, we could all agree in. Now, to be certain, crafting a resolution, and particularly one that has significant controversy with it, is no simple task, right? Especially when you try and manage different perspectives, language, and, and ultimately intent. And, and, and I say that, you know, that indeed, this item had to come forward on our agenda, because I knew, and I know Mr. Nagar knew, that in doing this, we'd have an opportunity for discussion and review. Because again, only he and I were able to speak on this issue. No other members were able to address this, and certainly not the public. And I think, interestingly, Nagar said, uh, Mike, you said something important at the, at the start of our meeting, which was, you know, hey, in hindsight, you would have, you would have rolled this out differently, to give folks an opportunity to, you know, have a, a discussion on this before specific language and things were crafted. And unfortunately, that wasn't what happened. But this isn't unique by any means. In fact, I think we saw this earlier today, right? At the earlier part of this council meeting, we had a staff report that talked about a stop sign, of all things, a stop sign. And staff brought forward their best recommendation on what they thought was appropriate. And yet, we listened to the public, we listened to the input, and we revised that recommendation based on that collective input. That's, that's really what this whole process is about. And so bringing forward this resolution was intended to do that, albeit it incited, I think, a, you know, an interesting dialogue in the community. It seems that this topic area, not surprising to, to me or anyone else, is an area that's certainly not entirely settled. But, uh, obviously, the beauty of this process is that we get the opportunity to have a conversation, and, and I was glad to see it remained civil. Government, hopefully, again, we could all agree, is, is an ongoing experiment, right? That's really what government is all about. It's about having dialogue and discourse, and it's never easy. Sometimes that experiment stumbles, right? And sometimes, it's important to stand up for policies or ideals that aren't universally But make no mistake, I came into this meeting with an open mind, hoping to hear from folks on the issue on all sides and carefully consider all positions. I thank everyone who did contact me. Kathleen, I know, had to leave, but she, she called me up. She was extremely dismayed, and I, and I had an opportunity to speak with her. Ira, I know you reached out to me as well, as, as many others in the community, and I all, and I sent the same email and had the same message to everyone who contacted me on this issue, or who bothered to contact me on this issue. And I affirmed one thing to everyone, and that is that I cannot, you know, at the end of the day, if we cannot find consensus on an issue among not just my colleagues, but our neighbors as well, I cannot in any good conscience support something that is divisive or doesn't serve a significant public purpose. That's our job, right? And so I, I appreciate everybody coming forward, and I appreciate everybody sharing their perspective, because I think now, more than any, any other time that I have been alive in our country, you know, have we been at such odds with one another? And I think we can, we can see that. We could see it on the news, we could see it on TV, and we could see it in our elections process. So, so I appreciate, and I genuinely do, everybody coming forward and, and speaking. So let's be honest here, right? The animosity at state and federal levels has obviously and deeply penetrated our national fabric and the city of Temecula. I think that's probably one of the most important things that I've learned here today. This area of politics is something that folks debate on, and there are wonderful legal scholars on both sides of the issue who have very strong opinions and who are able to craft very careful, legally defensible messages from both perspectives. And I would hope that the scholars in our audience that came forward would recognize that, because that, if you haven't noticed, is one of the biggest challenges of our Supreme Court, right? They are often handed these packages of information that legislators have struggled to craft, or, or laws and regulations that have been created, and then they have to muddle through that. And you'll often see, you know, split decisions, and you'll often see them struggle with trying to figure out a, a correct response. But as we struggle with this, we see a lot of, I think, dynamic ideas, a lot of opposing viewpoints, and a lot of just simply diametric policies that are being put forward, that conflict at both a national and a state and even a local level. And I'm not speaking about one party in particular, I'm speaking about both, you know? And that has been, I think, uh, an important part of this discussion. It's not just a healthy discussion we're having, but I think it's an important discussion. Over the past five years, I'll have to be honest, on the City Council, I have seen decisions impact our community in some very negative ways. But I know that those decisions at a national or a state level were intended to, you know, do good in many cases, and yet its implementation just simply struggled. And so do I have strong opinions about, you know, how, how federal and, and state practices impact local government? Absolutely, a hundred percent. And I do my best to represent those interests as much as possible. But, you know, going back to Mayor Nagar, I know that he very deeply wants Temecula to have a voice, as we all do, and he recognizes that what happens in a local level can resonate to our state and federal government, you know? And I, and I applaud the opportunity to try and create that dialogue. Now let's address, because this came up several times, the issue of freedom of speech. I mean, there is no more fundamental freedom, an important part of our Constitution, and it certainly is a constitutional right. But it is not absolute, and it is not unlimited. This is why I generally refrain from debates on social media. And I do this for two reasons. One, not everybody can, and certainly not everybody will, participate in that forum. And I, unfortunately, what I saw play out over this weekend was that folks can't always freely express themselves in a marketplace of ideas without fear of bullying, or name-calling, or just pure hatred, right? And, and that's disappointing to see. Now, I was glad we didn't see that here tonight, and I know that the online forum provides a bit of anonymity and a bit of freedom beyond what you would normally say in, in front of a public forum like this one. But in those cases, you know, I have to say that an idea can easily become a lightning rod, even a simple idea. And opposition to that idea can be stifling by, by other folks who, who are trying to prevent that speech, right? So if we truly believe in freedom of speech, then let freedom of speech occur, right? But I'll, I'll say, sadly, while we do have this freedom, no one is immune to the consequences. There are deep consequences from the things that we say. And unfortunately, when we disagree with each other today, it seems to be more the norm than not, that there's tremendous vitriol in our responses to one another. And, and I'm a little disappointed by that, because I, you know, I deeply thought we were, we were, we were beyond that. I like to think, and I was talking to some folks this morning, that there was a golden age in politics where this simply wasn't the case, but I was reminded that that just isn't true, right? I think we all like to, you know, sort of romanticize the past and, and see an era of, of, you know, fostering, you know, collegiality, but just simply, I think, didn't happen. Furthermore, and I think most importantly, the work of the public needs to happen in public, not online, you know, not in individual conversations, not in any of that. And I think that's why it was important for this to, to very, very much so, come forward. Everyone can have a voice, it's a fair voice, it's an open voice, and I appreciate Mr. Nagar, you know, setting the tone for today's meeting, because I think that was, well, that was very important. But that's why we were here today, to allow everyone to have an opportunity to speak, provide our colleagues to have an opportunity to speak on an issue, and their perspectives on this resolution. Now clearly, we're not going to vote on anything tonight, and, you know, clearly, you know, our, our attempts to mitigate, you know, our interests in the Constitution straight into territory that created strife within our community, and that's, that's never the intent. And, and for that, I deeply apologize. And you're not going to hear politicians often saying that, right? But I deeply apologize. I think, you know, well, thanks for the one clap there. Two, all right. But, but it, it's true. I mean, you know, never in, in our representation should we place ourselves in, in such a high regard that we can't admit when we haven't hit the target we want to, and, and remember that we're here to represent a community, not ourselves, not a party, and not anyone else. And so, you know, it's, it's our responsibility to make sure that there's cohesion in our community, and the, the, you know, love Temecula, absolutely. I believe in that, as I know my colleagues do, and as Mr. Nagar does, very deeply. Mr. Catan, your, your hand, Kate, and your hand is still up. Are you asking a question, or are you just supportive?
I think, uh, just the main and supportive of Congress, pointing.
Thank you, sir.
And I'm, I'm a lot of great.
All right, good. Well, as a professor, I always feel like I should, you know, sorry, what's your question? Okay, so we'll move on. You know, with all that said, here's, here's where I've, I've landed on all of this. And again, I appreciate everybody reaching out, and I appreciate everybody who, who reached out early, actually listening to me, you know? But again, here's what I think I've learned, and hopefully, what we've all learned. It's actually pretty simple, really. And, and Mike, perhaps the message for this City Council to send to our residents and to the state and national government is, is just this: We cannot tolerate behavior that tears our community apart and puts us at, puts us at odds with one another. Prosperity and enlightenment do not come from divisiveness and forcing ideals on one another, but from us finding common ground and embracing and finding strength in our differences. So, so I would say to everybody that, you know, yeah, this was an uncomfortable conversation to have. I, I don't know if you know this, but I'm sure most of you looked up at this point, you know, I, I happen to be registered as a Republican. My wife is, is not. And, you know, come, come over to Thanksgiving at our house sometime, when all the family's there, and we have a very robust and, and very charged political dialogue, and especially when family members come over, they see somebody who happens to be in an elected position, and they assume my favorite topic is politics at the Thanksgiving table. It is not, but, but we do, we have a very robust dialogue. And, and I'll say this, too. My wife and I have, have derived significant strength from our differences and, and our friendly discourse, and I'd like to be able to see the same thing happen here in Temecula today. I'd like us to be able to show not just our city, but our country, and even our state, that, that we can, we can do better than what we see on that national platform, and that hopefully, we do come together, and, and hopefully, you know, in, in times, you know, I can't say as, as, you know, a legal scholar, in times when our country has been able to do that, we've had tremendous prosperity. So, so with that, I will, I will defer to my colleagues, but genuinely appreciate everyone coming out here tonight and, and sharing their ideas with us. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Ron. Well said. Mayor Portem Stewart.
Okay, well, um, I will tell you, because of the Brown Act, like you said, it really was something we knew nothing about, and Danielle over there actually sent me a text and said, "What do you think about this?" And I, that was the first, that was my first introduction to this resolution. So I immediately got on, and I, I started following the thread of, you know, what everybody was saying on Facebook, because I'm a big Facebook guy, I'm a big social media guy. So, um, I found it very interesting, because, I mean, if it would have been a resolution just strictly upholding, you know, reaffirming our belief in the Constitution, I'm, I'm there a thousand percent. But, but the, the whole socialistic, and, and that, that portion actually made me start to think. So it made me start to actually look at the, the current federal government, past and present, at all the socialistic programs that we have today. I mean, we, we are, we do have a whole lot of socialistic programs in this country today. Most of them very, very good and helpful and necessary. So, you know, I see, I see the value in that, you know? And I, I don't see it as a, um, something that's, that's going to tear the fabric, we're going to go broke because of it, but, I mean, I see the fabric of the society actually being better because of it. It's, it's just a matter of how are we going to pay for it? And so, and I think that's, that's what's happening with, um, government today is, or the people who are in power, is they want all these programs, but who is going to pay for them? And that's, that's my only struggle with this, the, the whole, you know, what's happening in Washington today. So, I, I couldn't support the resolution. I have told many people that, you know, that I, you know, as it's written, for sure. And so, um, but that being said, it really did make me think, and it made me get in on the conversation that was being put forth out there by the public. So I appreciate all you guys bringing all this up, because it's all very valid, everything you guys were saying. So, um, so that's really all I had to say, so thank you.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I put.
Mr. Schwank?
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to everyone for the emails, the feedback, for coming here tonight. I mean, truly, this is what government is about, is listening to your constituents and just listening to the community. So, you know, I genuinely appreciate it. I don't think I've ever spent so much time away from my kids returning emails that I didn't last few days, but, but it's been well worth it. So, you know, I'll, I'll try to make this quick. One of the proudest moments of my life was when I was appointed a commissioner, and I took that oath of office, and that was like six years ago. And I just redid that when I was elected in November. So that, you know, the idea that we reaffirm the Constitution, I'm all in, like, all in, you know, it's, it's, that's a, that's a no-brainer. But as I look out here and, and, and I see friends, I see mentors, I see teachers and principals, I see PTA parents from the school I work at, I see my dentist, I see, I see a community, I see a whole community, and it's, it's important that we not be divisive. So, you know, as we're sitting around the dinner table, you know, discussing this resolution with my family and trying to like, how do I, how do I bounce this off my daughter? How do I bounce this off my, my, my 10th grade daughter? And, and it was really difficult, so I'll be honest, it was really difficult. We talk about, you know, there was a Hamilton reference earlier, and we might be in the golden age of the, of the Constitution. There are people rapping about the Constitution. My son, my second-grade son came home the, last week with a test on the Constitution. It was a Core Lit book that they read in second grade. The fifth-grade students at our school now are doing, doing Revolutionary Days right now, so we just hosted AP Gov students that, we even made some comments, and their teacher said, "Well, that's from the Federalist Papers, and that's from the Constitution." So, you know, we have a lot of knowledge and a lot of, a lot of input from our schools and, and with our children, but, but maybe where we're not doing that is in the public realm, right? Like, we're not really having that discussion. I mentioned to some of my colleagues earlier that, you know, politics is hard to discuss, and, and my family's had this sort of like, "Let's not talk about it," you know? Like, when my dad was, when he was the head of the table, "Yeah, we aren't going to talk about that." You know, maybe that's not a good idea. Ira brought up a good point, that maybe having these conversations, albeit it's tough, you know, it needs to happen. It just makes us a stronger, better community in the process. It makes us understand each other, we all come from different backgrounds. I look at City Hall, you probably have the most diverse City Hall in California here, not here, staff and, and everyone involved, you have a very diverse community. Temecula has changed since we moved here, and it has become more diverse and, and, and better because of that. So that's just where I'm at. So that's just where I'm at. You know, when I look at the things we do and Community Services does, it's full inclusion. I mean, it's just, we're all in on inclusion, right? Well, that inclusion could extrapolate to this political process. We want to include everyone in the things we do. When I go to parades, I'm not worried about someone's political affiliation, I'm not worried about what they do, I'm just happy that they're there. Puesska Mountain Day, when we, when we go to there and, and hold these beautiful events out in Town Square Park, it's, it's just a great time to be part of the community and I think that's important. So that's where I'm at with this. You know, solution for me is, is continue the conversation, I think it's, it's important. I think, I think having, you know, some sort of celebration, something that we do in Town Square Park to, to have this dialogue, whether it's a Constitution Day celebration or some, something along those lines, but, you know, that's what we do. When we, when we want to, when we want to talk about something, we have a task force, we have a, some sort of symposium, we, we get out in the public and we talk about it. And we don't really need to be afraid to talk about it. So, you know, I think this has been a tough night, but I think as a community, we come out of this as a whole and, and Mr. Mayor, I know where your heart is. I've worked with you long enough and Dr. Ron as well. You know, I think your heart's in the right spot. I think, you know, I would, obviously wouldn't be able to support the resolution as, as written. So we send it back and, and we continue the dialogue and maybe it never comes back. But we have some dialogue. Maybe we have some dialogue in the community. We have some dialogue in the community to move this process forward so that we can all get along. I mean, we're all Temecula proud. I mean, I am so proud of our community and, and the people that live here. People that I know, lifelong friends and, and people that have been in this community for many years. This is who we are and this is what makes us just a beautiful, inclusive community. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Edwards?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, my, my colleagues know I love meetings like this. These are my favorite meetings because I love to see the passion. I love to see, I don't want to say arguments, but I love the way people present their own side of the issue, especially when we can do it and remain civil and not call names and so many of the things that you see in social media. And I don't do social media just for that reason. I don't think it's a good, I don't think it's a good place to have an honest dialogue. I think a lot of people get on there just to hate and it doesn't really accomplish anything. So these are my absolute favorite meetings and there are a handful of meetings like this that we've had and I could name every one of them, but... And I wrote a lot of emails this weekend and I think has been said before, the Brown Act is really frustrating for us sometimes, but we follow it very, very closely because number one, we have to, and number two, because it's what preserves the public meeting concept. The things that we do have to be done in public with 72 hours' notice because you need to be here to monitor and see what's happening in your local government, the government that is closest, the government that affects you really the most. And I'm so glad that everyone is here and I'm sorry the kids left at 8 o'clock, well, not all of them have left, but I'm sorry that some of them left at 8 o'clock because I think this would have been a fantastic lesson in government. Clearly, I think what started out as, you know, with good intentions, somehow, you know, the wheel fell off somewhere. And when I saw, and I like Stu, received an email and, and it said, you know, and it was very angry email, had no idea what they were talking about. And then I went back and did some homework and I said, "Oh my gosh, it just didn't sound like what Temecula or what you would normally present or what Matt would normally present." And I always give, I got to tell you, we, there is mutual respect all along this dais and that's what makes Temecula so successful and that, that includes our city staff. So I would never criticize, I was surprised when I read it, but I couldn't talk to anyone about it until we got here. So, and as much as we don't want to offend anyone, as a family, we can talk very frankly. And, and so that's what I'm doing. I think this just, the wheels just came off. I think Mike has always had good intentions, Matt certainly has good intentions and, and it's always with the, the city in mind and what's best for the residents. I love this city. I live, breathe, brag, laugh, cry, Temecula. I am so proud of what the city had, how far we've come and the things that we've done. And it has all happened for one reason and that's because of the people who live here. We have a mutual respect for one another, we don't care what color anybody is, we love our neighbors, we're, everyone is so eager and ready to help in every way. It is just a phenomenal place. And people who come to visit say, "Oh my gosh, I, every place I went for the last three days, everybody was so nice." I said, "Well, yeah, it's Temecula." And it really is. We have something very special here and it's because we can have open dialogue and we can agree to disagree and we can agree to be passionate about the things we are passionate about, but we can still love our neighbors and we can still care for people and we can still make our community a better place. And I think that's exactly why we've been so successful. I think that's why we've been able to retain our small-town feel because, like you said, I'm, I'm looking out here, I see people I've known for 30 years. Hey! And that's what's so wonderful. I go to this, my husband won't go to the store with me anymore because it takes me four hours to get out of the grocery store. So, and, but that's what I love about this city. People care, they want to know what's going on. So kudos to you who were able to come tonight and talk about this. I, I'm going to say something a little bit different than everyone else. I, I think you had good intentions, you had good intentions, because I know you both very well and I, I love these guys. For, for all that we go through, as hard as they work, I love every person on the city staff. They're, they're phenomenal. I would like to see this just die. And if you want to bring something back... Let's bring it back in the way that I think you really intended, you know, with input. And I don't think there's anyone in this room who would denounce the Constitution, period. I don't think we would. And I love the Constitution and I know everyone up here does. So I, I would just like to see this just go away and if you, you know, if you want to bring it back as something else or the thing that you intended, then let's just start over. And let's put this behind us because Temecula is not a city to be divided. It would take something huge to divide us from one another and, and everything that we've done and the commonality that we have in wanting to fiercely protect the quality of life that we have here. Because it's, you can't find this everywhere. In fact, I would say you can't find it anywhere. So I would like to see this one go away and let's bring back something that we can discuss or that we can, everybody can support. And this council works very hard to come to a conclusion that we can all support because we want to move forward as a block of five. So, yep, and I'm going to move to extend the meeting if we need to, but I don't think we'll need to. Anyway, that's, that's what I think we should do and I, you know, like you guys so much. And it's, it's been an interesting conversation. I love these kinds of meetings.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, well, thanks. I'll, I'll lend my comments. I'll try to be brief because it's getting late and it is past my bedtime and probably many of yours as well. Dr. Ron, I think you hit it right on the head and you were very articulate in the way that you put it. I'll give my few comments. I've been on this council pushing now almost 20 years, planning commission about two years before that. Anybody who's followed my, I, I hate to call it a career because I have a, I have a real job, but anybody who's followed me knows that I get very zealous for the things that, that I believe in and I think, I'd like to believe that, that the city has benefited from it.
And we have.
Since I've started here, let's see, city was 10 years old. I like to tell people, if you, if you love these things about it, hey, thank me because I had a hand in it. If you hate some things about it, you can blame me because I had a hand in it. So when I hear things like fix parking in, in Old Town and things like that, you know, going back 10, 11, 12 years, we hoped for that problem. We actually hoped for that problem and so we're kind of right where we wanted to land. But let me get back on point. Why no vote on this issue today is after getting a lot of emails from both sides over the weekend, I called the city manager and I, I lamented over that and it was proceeding in a way that I did not want it to proceed. This was never meant to be, to, to strike division, it was meant to strike dialogue. And what became evident was that it got rolled out a little too quickly, hence stop pushing forward with the resolution and have a dialogue this evening. And so that's why we're probably going to receive and file it. Maybe it'll come back in another form, we'll see how that goes. I heard a lot of definitions of socialism tonight and it's interesting because many people had different versions of, of what they called socialism. I heard using the streets, I've heard social programs, a CDVG, the gentleman, I think he left, mentioned, you know, fund state grants for fixing the freeway and all that and many people define that as socialism. And I guess in some form and some factor, yeah, I think that's, you've educated me tonight in that regard. Okay, I can, I can call that a form of socialism. It's, it's not by definition, but by legislation, for the social benefit and for the public good, which the Constitution allows, by the way, in its preamble. These programs came forth. Of course, there's a spending problem in Washington DC. We, we, I think we borrow, what, $6 billion a day? So it's definitely not sustainable, but, but the, the programs that are out there, well, we keep spending and spending and it's not sustainable. When I read the Webster's definition of socialism, that's what scares me. When I see that on both sides of the coin, in, in both political parties in one way or another, proffering a form of socialism, I want to know what form of socialism they're talking about. Because when I hear that word, I hear Merriam-Webster's definition and that, and, and when you look at Merriam-Webster's definition, it means the, the taking of private property, it means the taking of business, it means that the government controls the means to everything. I'm paraphrasing, if you look at the resolution, it's in there. If that is the form of socialism, please, please don't interrupt me, I'm, I'm, I'm being brief, I could be more concise if you want me to take a half an hour, I can read the definition, but it's, it's there. When you start, when you start breaking down and the government taking control of all production, controlling all production, dictating how production occurs, certainly it occurs in some fashion today, I've already acknowledged that. But when you have government take over everything and then start to dictate what people can make and what people cannot make, that exists in Cuba today, by the way. Doctors make, make as much as taxi drivers. So this is not some sort of unreal thing that we're talking about. When I hear that version of socialism and compare it to the structure of, of the Constitution, they are opposed to one another. The Constitution lays out how the government is to be formed, how electors are going to be formed, what the purpose of the electors are to do, who has power over the budget, who has powers over, over the three branches of government, on and on, it describes that. And socialism, by Merriam-Webster's definition, does not fit that. So if there are other types of socialism being put forward, I would say that on the national debate and certainly on the state debate and here down on the local debate, we need to define it. So I appreciate you folks here giving that other version of what you look at as socialism. You know, I, I get zealous when I talk about this country. Many of you people don't know, but I'm a, I'm a first generation in this country. My father came here, let me explain this, he came here as an illegal immigrant, okay? And, and, and eventually got married and started having children and, and had to get legal. They actually made him leave the country and come back into the country the right way. And I have, it's amazing, he kept all the documents. I have the warrants for his arrest, the whole nine yards, very fascinating. And if anybody wants to see it at some point, I'd be happy to show it to you. But he loved this country so much, and he was from Egypt, that when he got here, he named his children Carol, Richard, Nancy, Lori, and Michael, okay? If you can imagine. I, so I'm the first generation here. And I like to joke with Chuck Washington in particular because when he, he was mayor here, the papers reported that he was the first African-American mayor. And I took umbrage with that, okay? Because I actually was the first African-American male by definition, okay? Not necessarily by skin, but by country of origin, I was. And so we always like to have a little laugh about that. A couple of things I also want to say. In my zealousness, yes, I put something on Facebook that depicted my zealousness. But it was not to divide, it was to unite. I see now that perhaps it was a little divisive. You know, I broke a cardinal rule, was that I just don't do Facebook government, but, but I got overzealous. So I'm actually, you know, I, I left everything up there, okay? Didn't take it down, all right? Because I didn't want to be, I don't know, accused of a coward or hiding or what have you. But actually, I'm probably going to pull off all those platforms, okay? Just because I, government on those forums are not, don't do it well and does a disservice. In fact, look at the misunderstanding that kind of has occurred because of it. So not going to do that anymore. A few more things that kind of depict my zealousness. These are things that I think about all the time. I really do think about them all the time. And, and just in random order, I'm very scared when I hear Medicare for All. It's not that I would not want everybody to have health care, I certainly do. But I know that when the federal government starts to control something, typically they're going to not do a good job of it. And, and if anybody wants to argue that with me, the waste of, of money by federal government, I don't think I need to make an argument for. You know, I have an autistic son at home. He's 13 years old. You know what really concerns me? Is that by the time he hits his 50s or 60s, God willing, will there be enough money to pay for his health care in this scenario? And will there be a selection of health care? Will he, because of his mind, not be selected to get heart surgery or, or whatever surgeries are there? Those things scare me. So when I see, when I see health care taken over or being proffered to take over by the entire federal government, that's scary to me. I, I'm legitimately bothered by that. Now, we know some people, particularly running for President of the United States, have put forward that. So that fear is not unrealistic. The question's being asked, how are we going to pay for it? And then when you start talking about taxing everybody who's making X amount of dollars, whatever, it still doesn't add up to enough to pay for it and we're borrowing $6 billion a day. So I don't know how all this is sustainable in 20 years from now.
Uh, Mayor?
Yes?
Sorry to interrupt, we just would want to motion to extend.
Yeah. Motion to extend for 15 more minutes.
11:45.
To 11:45. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And I'm almost done. I mean, I'm a small business owner, I can do the math. This can't, deficit spending can't continue, it doesn't work in your house and we're living offload and printing money. At some point, that's got to come to an end. I'm going to finish with a couple of things that just speak toward my zealousness and why I wanted to have this dialogue. Number one, our Constitution is the greatest document in the history of mankind and I hope everybody lets that sink in. America right now is an experiment. That, that, that document has been alive, how old are we now? About 240, are we 35? I forget, we're somewhere in that range. And, and it remains to be seen how much further it can go and how much it can last, particularly on the present course we're on. It's an experiment. Liberty in this fashion as a constitutional republic is an experiment. It's never been done before, okay? And, and so God forbid us that we lose it. Why are we having this discussion? I won't be too redundant, but we are, you are the government closest to the people. Per the document, we send our voices up to Washington DC. Again, I won't get into details, but laws in Washington, laws in the state of California are affecting you daily. When you talk about... the state of California are affecting you daily. When you talk about cure homelessness, when you talk about fix the roads, I can tell you how Sacramento has taken money away from us that we would use to do that. They have changed laws that have made, that have released criminals from jail onto our streets, and that we have to now take care of the problem. And you're experiencing that in homelessness. And then you'll come to us and say, "What are you doing about the homeless problem?" Which is permeating the whole region, the whole state of California, really everywhere. These are things that we're challenged with. We have a direct relationship to the federal government and to the state government, and it affects us all the way down the line. I want to say, and I don't want to wax too eloquent, that I constantly think of, because of many of the events that I attend, and a lot of things that are of interest to me, that there was a great deal of blood shed, more than anyone can imagine, in creating and upholding and preserving our way of government. An unimaginable loss of life, of fathers, of husbands, of mothers, of daughters, and sons, never to marry, never having children, leaving family members to mourn, a lifetime over what was lost and what might have been. That's what the Constitution means to me, and what people paid for it. I am very zealous about upholding it. And in my zealousness, if I get it a little wrong, this community can, we can have that discussion, okay? I'm open to listening, where, "Mike, you may have been a little off there." And I learned something tonight, different viewpoints on how you folks define socialism. It's not how I defined it. And that gave me some insight right there. Few other things. The close of the Constitutional Convention of 1787. Ben Franklin was queried as he left Independence Hall on the final day of deliberation. In the notes of Dr. James McHenry, one of Maryland's delegates to the convention, a lady asked Dr. Franklin, "Well, doctor, what have we got? A republic or a monarchy?" And that was very much in play. Franklin replied, "You got a republic, if you can keep it." So, my question in this dialogue here today, us, Temeculans, what are we going to do about keeping it? It is incumbent upon us to speak the people, and send it up the chain about, as you said, Dr. Ron, okay, sending our message up the chain about our community having this dialogue, and how we feel, and how a lot of this undefined dialogue becomes very divisive to our community. Couple of other things. Valley Forge. The winter of 1777 and '76 tested the resolve of the Continental Army. Washington quartered his army at Valley Forge, approximately 20 miles northwest of Philadelphia for the winter months. The legacy of the winter at Valley Forge is one of starvation and struggle to stay fed, clothed, and sheltered. The quality of the diet of the soldiers at Valley Forge fell to appallingly low standards. Soldiers recorded eating not only their pet dogs, but also their own leather shoes to sustain themselves. That is what it cost. And then, when you think only about 30% really of the population at the time wanted to defy the king, there really wasn't a popular war at the time. Everybody was okay with the monarchy. Prior to that, the Declaration of Independence made criminals of all who signed it. About, I mentioned the 30%. They pledged their life and their sacred fortunes to be freed from the monarchy. Time does not permit, but maybe sometime in the future, we can discuss the Civil War, World War I, World War II, Korea, and Vietnam, and the life that was lost in preserving this very precious document that we have here. Why do we have these discussions? You know what? The, we have a Veterans Memorial at our duck pond. We have a fallen heroes memorial there as well. And the duck pond has become a de facto place to voice your opinions, and to hold signs. I think it was Ms. Holly. Ms. Holly, are you here? I don't know if you left. There you are, Ms., yeah. Where you were saying, you know, you were, you were out there holding signs. No, that's okay. And that's become the place to come out and, you know, and let your political will be known. But, you know, for me, you know, I was there when we dedicated the Veterans Memorial. My family members have bricks there. I was there when we did the fallen heroes memorial. We can't pay lip service to those. And I'm not suggesting anybody is. But go read those letters home at the Veterans Memorial. You will leave there crying. And if you're not, your heart's a little cold. A big price was paid. Anyway, I'm almost done. Let's see here. I'll skip a few things. My comment just bears explanation. Like I said, I think I was a little bit zealous, but when we take the oath of office, we, there's certain things that we say. We agree to uphold the Constitution, okay, against all enemies, foreign and domestic. We take it without purpose of evasion. Purpose of evasion means for no other purpose. And what I interpreted that as, if somebody, an elected official or a military person, took that oath of office knowingly, with a purpose of evasion, knowing that I'm going to get into office, and when I get into office, I'm going to do something subversive to the United States of America, that bothers me. That's the oath that we all take. So, how do we define that? That's the topic of this discussion. Anyway, I appreciate this. And while there may be a desire to table it or make it go away, I'm gonna recommend we receive and file this. What I think I'd like to do, and maybe Dr. Ron and I, or maybe some of the other council members, I'd like to have more discussions like this, but not from the dais, and not with a resolution hanging over our head, whereas people have to worry about something being adopted. I like the idea of maybe getting into the conference center. I like the idea of coffee. I like the idea of good citizens of this community exchanging ideas, building one another up, and sending our thoughts up to Sacramento and Washington. That's how I envision it. So, you're very patient in listening to me. And you know what? Like I said, third time, maybe in this one, I was a little overzealous. But you know what? I'll tell you, when I get overzealous, a lot of good things happen, too. So, God bless you. And at this point, I'm gonna entertain, anybody else have anything they want to say? Okay. Then, I'll entertain a motion to receive and file. Dr. Ron, you and I will circle back with staff. We'll see where we take it from here, but for right now, receive and file. Is everybody okay with that? Then I'll take a motion.
Mr. Mayor, to just, if it's easier, we actually just can take general direction.
Okay.
And we don't need a...
Okay. So, let's go ahead and receive and file. And then, you know what? At some time in the future, Dr. Ron and I will circle back, and we'll decide what we'll do. Maybe we'll, some community forums. We'll see what we'll do, okay?
Yeah. I just want to say real quick.
Go ahead.
I really like the idea of just letting this die. So...[1511.01][1511.01][applause] I think we've all, I think we've all said what we have to say, and I think we've had a robust dialogue here this evening. And I'd like to see us, you know, again, focus on those items that, you know, serve the public purpose. And, you know, look, we have organizations here in town, and partners of our city that can help foster a dialogue on these types of subjects. And so, maybe we reach out to, you know, folks at the law school or others, and, you know, work with them to create this. But I think, you know, if we walk away here from this dais with anything, it's that, you know, this is not a place that we should be directing that dialogue. There are experts there that could help.
Fair enough. Receive and file.
Yes, sir.
And that does it for item 23. Let's move on to item 24 on the agenda. Appoint a subcommittee of the city council to...
What happened?
Oh, pardon.
What happened?
Receive and file.
What does that mean?
That just means we've had our discussion. It goes in the file.
But everybody said they want to kill it, except for you.
It's the same thing. It's the same thing.
There's no action.
I personally am gonna, however I decide to handle, I don't know, okay?
That's why I prefer it after you say, "Kill it," or "Vote on it." But...
Well...
So, there's nothing behind closed doors, bringing this back into the...
No, it's not coming back. It's not coming back. It looks like the council consensus is it's not coming back. Anyway, that's fine. Any other comments? Okay, so we're gonna move on to item 24. Appoint a subcommittee of the city council to assist with the selection process for state and federal legislative consultants. Can we have a staff report, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As this is our last item, I will make this very quick. Currently, the city of Temecula has an RFP that is live to go ahead and review for state and federal legislative consultant services. And we are looking for a city council subcommittee to help assist staff in that RFP process. That concludes staff's report, and we'll go ahead and take a motion.
Thank you. Thank you. If you'd be so kind as to take conversation out into the hallway, because we're still in session... And I'm not certain the council heard your staff report. At least, I heard parts of it. Could you just quickly...
Sure.
Reiterate it?
Absolutely. As I was just mentioning, the RFP, request for proposals, is currently live. It's for state and federal legislative consultants. It will be running from April 1st to April 30th. Staff is simply looking for a two-member council subcommittee to help us through that process. Any recommendations made by the subcommittee to select a particular firm for either state or federal services, we'll come back to the full council.
Thank you. Any questions of staff?
No.
Okay. Do we have any speakers? Okay, so what type of direction do you want?
I would like to have two council members go ahead and volunteer to serve on that committee, please.
I nominate Councilmember Ron.
Yeah. Councilmember Ron would be perfect, because of his knowledge of lobbying efforts. Anybody else want to volunteer?
I'll do it.
All right. Mayor Protem Stewart, can we get a motion?
Move approval.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, you got it.
You have four minutes. Three minutes.
Yeah. All right. No departmental reports, community development monthly report. I, you know what? I'm gonna skip some of these reports. I'm gonna skip commission reports today. We're just gonna go home. And that should, it, I'll take, and we don't have a city attorney report. Do you want to report out?
Sure. The council met earlier today in closed session to evaluate the city manager. There is no further action to report.
Thank you. City manager?
Nothing tonight.
Okay, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Move adjournment.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.